Ready Judge.
All right, it is nine thirty AM on tenth day of July, which is a Wednesday. We'll bring this budget workshop to order. Let the record show Jeff Harris, Richard Tellerberry, Danny Chambers, Tammy Gray, and Wade Bush are all present. And it'll just be another day of talking about budget and budget numbers. And thank you Ms. Stepp. And we'll text you when we go to lunch if I remember that, yesterday I forgot.
Yes, sir.
If I remember, we'll text you. Or somebody remind me to text you. Okay, we've got Eric with maintenance up first, but Eric's a mighty busy man. Let's give him a few minutes.
If I have.
If not, we'll text him and yeah, well. Then after that, we've got Brian Jones with the fire department. Then at ten fifteen, we've got Kelly Harris. And then we'll break for lunch, then we'll come back and we'll talk to Trey and Haley. Uh, the expo we're probably gonna wait and do next week also. As we fire up our other talks, the seventeenth, twenty-fourth, thirty-first. Anything else y'all'd like to talk about before it gets here, before I bother? Uh, mine? Mine is pretty much gonna be the same. I really hadn't went through everything. Mine pretty much follows y'all's except for uh my travel and my seminars, which I really don't see why I need to change any of mine right now, Nikki. So on mine, we can just leave it the same.
But you do have one in there that we use quite often when we do build property in your budget, don't we?
Yeah, the engineering services, I think it is.
Yeah, is that still, has it got money in it now? I mean, is there still money for next year, y'all mean?
Yeah, there'll be money that, yeah, that we put in there to allocate for next year. I think it's like twenty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred, if y'all want to leave that in there. Hopefully, we get a lot of things well, but we may have two surveys coming up, you're right. And they may not get done before October first. So yeah, we better leave the engineering services in there the same. And here again, I'm not getting y'all's business, it's none of my business. I don't know about y'all's, what y'all want to do. We can address that whenever y'all decide you want to. We went over many departments, let's look at some other stuff while until it gets here. Yeah, it looks like the highest we ever used out of that way, it was about forty-nine fifty one year we used for the surveys. So maybe we should put five thousand in there this year, because probably the surveys will be using the independent.
Well, that must be probably had to do twice, so you never know.
That's true. We did. Uh, already done, good. All right, so she's got six copies for y'all. Let me just go ahead and text Eric. Yeah, we did.
Nikki.
Speaking budget. Did I remember right, the one we got, when we did our insurance last year, did we do that for a two-year? I was thinking that we did it, it was gonna be in for two.
No, we, that was a, that was like a couple of years ago.
For some reason, I was thinking that we did it, so it's not.
I did talk, I did email Denise yesterday. And she's working on trying to get us some stuff.
And that's what always gets us, because you know, sometimes the only way we file a proposal, we don't have those numbers back. And that's huge, what is it, like fourteen hundred ahead right now per month?
Eleven thousand a year, eleven thousand something.
Well, we put, we're putting in the budget, it looks like, for one person, looks like we're putting twelve hundred, twelve thousand five hundred dollars per person.
There you go.
Yeah, whether that's off spring or not, I don't know.
That's probably, I think, just the medical is around eleven, and then by the time we add the
Carefree, life insurance.
Dental.
Dental.
It could be right up there.
Twenty twenty-three, we're eleven and five, and then twenty-four, we're twelve and five.
Eric said he'll be here shortly, let's just give him a minute.
For some reason, I was thinking that we had a two-year deal last time we got insurance.
That was a few years ago.
I don't know, year four last.
Yeah, I think, I think two years ago, we did.
So I was just dreaming then, huh?
Because you remember, we had to give them everything, I think it was, and then we got a two-year deal. And then last year, we had to give them everything to get what we did get.
Just what we get.
To keep what we had and still pay more. What's going on, Eric? We know you're busy, you're a very busy person, we know that. All the commissioners and Nikki have a copy of what you turned in, Eric?
Okay. So. And since then, that's kind of changed, because I put on there that I was wanting to get some of this equipment, that wetback I already bought. And this other stuff I'm looking at, you know, a bigger grain auger, because the one we got is just not doing it.
You didn't want the bigger ones, yes.
Yeah. Uh, my table saw burned out about six months ago, so I need a new one of those. And uh, vacuum, gotta get a new vacuum. And there's a couple toilets that I'm putting in, money to replace any parts. One of them looked like somebody just took a rocket and smashed the lid, and it's just cracked all around.
In the park? Heritage Park again? Oh, actually, it'll buy the courthouse. I know they destroyed Heritage Park two, three times for you.
Getting your table a bit. I'll get somebody to clean it.
Well, what, what do you think, what do you think on your five seventy, Eric? Do you want to leave it at five thousand, you think you should put more in there for your?
Well, I was looking at it, last year, I guess y'all approved the building maintenance part-time pay.
Yes.
For seven five hundred?
Yes.
If y'all don't mind, I could use that to buy the equipment I need this year. And it's off the books, you don't have to budget for it. And then, I think it's only like fifty-two hundred bucks for all that that I listed.
So take the seventy-five and put it down in your five seventy and do a way of the part-time?
Yeah.
With the toilets and everything?
Yep, with toilets.
You're one to have to do this now, right?
To do it by now, so I can get it done before the end of the year.
Get it taken care of.
Yeah, that's just a transfer.
Yeah. And then, next year, we can just do away with the part-time pay.
Well, it shows eighty thousand from last year.
Well, that was for that truck.
Truck, yeah.
And also put down that I would like to have a pay raise.
Yes.
Yep.
And you deserve it.
I, I, I feel like I do.
You do.
It's kind of hard keeping texts around here.
You've been to what, three just recently?
Yeah.
Well, the last one hasn't worked out either?
One did show up.
No, the, the new one, he's a, if he sticks around, it'll work out.
The third one's stayed with you so far.
Yeah. But, yeah, he's actually over there working right now, so it's amazing, I like to watch him. But, I mean.
That is nice.
I've been by myself almost for the, almost a year now, since last October, except for a few months we had Charlie here.
Right.
Swearing on me.
Where did Charlie wind up going?
Shorty Kirk, I think.
Oh, did he? He ended up going back to Smith Supply or not?
No. But, I mean, that's all I'm asking for, what y'all decide is totally up to y'all. But I would like to get all that equipment paid for it for sure.
Will you go ahead and get with Nikki or Valerie and do the transfer?
I'll do the budget transfer.
Will you do it from a part-time into this five seventy, so we go and get that equipment? And then we'll put five thousand more in the five seventy for whatever comes up next year? And then do it with part-time altogether? Actually, this is, this is seventy-five hundred, if y'all are good with that. Let's just take seventy-five hundred, double transfer for this year, and just leave it there for next year.
Okay. That's cool.
Because you've had a, you've had a rough year this year, we've had a lot of anomalies.
Like I said, if y'all do approve the raise, you can use that seventy-five hundred for that. And put the remainder down there, that's just extra money for parts and all that.
And everything else, you like it like it is?
Uh, I'm not even close to burning through all that money, so I'm not gonna ask for more.
I like what you think.
With dentoral supplies and repair parts and supplies, that's all good?
Yeah, it's going up.
Even with vanity, I mean, all this vandalism we're having?
I haven't used all of it yet, but I mean, we are getting to where all these old AC units around town are starting to get out on us. I've got the senior center and all that, it's, it's gonna start blowing up here pretty soon.
And I know you're just sick and tired of talking about it. Where do we stand on the sheriff's office? Because I know we were doing like six, and then we were doing, we were still behind, yeah. This was way back when David was here, we was working our way through them. Do you know where we're at down there?
We've replaced one of them.
Okay.
Because it just totally went out in Allen's office. And then we still have four more.
Okay.
That are old and need to get replaced. But that'd be something I would probably look at, make industry to do.
So I could supervise and do the whole thing as a project?
Yeah, so that's a big, big project.
And if the corridor approves, you know, we leave plenty of money in there for capital improvements and capital of, for many different areas. So if the corridor approves to do that, along with the contingency, we've been very fortunate the last few years to be able to do the emergency repairs.
And it wouldn't hurt, I know they're not going how to get it, but it's only a matter of time before their water heaters are gonna go out over there.
Okay.
We've been having problems off and on all year with keeping that water at a certain temperature.
Those probably are high volume too, aren't they?
They're big.
And they're probably high dollar.
Yeah, there's no sense in waiting until they go out.
Yeah. Do you have an idea how many thousands one of those run?
Do not, I'd have to, I'd have to look into it.
I bought one, I mean, I bought one for the house. It was six fifty.
These are these big old boreholes.
They're a hundred gallon or better. I mean, they're the size of me.
Probably twice as much.
Oh, yeah, they're really big. And we might be better off going tankless. I'm not sure, I'd have to, I'd probably go with the plumber and see what they think, just like.
It's worth looking at, at least to compare the cost, it's worth looking at. Your wiring when handled and what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's got gas in there, so it won't be so much on electrical end.
Unless you could fire that in.
Yeah.
It's a lot more efficient.
Not be worried, check them out. Yeah.
Only problem I have with those flow ones is they clog up.
Yeah.
Surely by now, they figured out some ways to help with that issue.
The, the gas ones aren't as bad at clogging up as the electric ones. Sorry, making myself a nutter off the gear.
You got a lot of projects going right now between this building and the senior center?
Yeah.
And Sheriff's Department.
This over here, I got that guy yesterday to bid the floor.
Yes.
I got a guy coming today to bid the entire floor.
I had, I had asked Eric to look at, not, not
Yeah, I do.
Deciding anything, of course, I would build all of us. But I'd asked him to look at possibly redoing the cabinets. Maybe taking that dishwasher out and putting the old stove and oven set, something, just to kind of update that break room a little bit and
Heard his request for TV also.
Well, I ain't, I ain't got there yet.
Heard that request had been made.
Yeah.
He got a free one, ain't he, bro?
I could've, but I already traded it in. But uh
In the corner of the wall, yeah.
But those, those cabinets are pretty far gone and, and just, just to kind of spruce it up a little bit and bring it back up a little bit. It might get more used if we do that, but uh
If something happens, I mean, this is just a question, you know, like current events, something, you know, like blow up something and it's a national news. Do y'all have somewhere to actually keep up with what's going on?
Like the PIO and stuff, you mean?
I'm talking about TV, you know.
No, you're talking about nationwide, something.
What we do is we go to the O C.
Yeah.
We've got those screens right there at the O C. When we had the black light matter ordeal, yeah, that's, we had everything activated and then those screens, each screen had a different place.
Do you have one here?
No, no. No, now Mike used to have one in his office full-time, he had cable and he had the weather news on, you know, full-time. I never have done that here, I've just always done the O C. Well, Eric, anything else?
But yeah, that's just something he and I have been working on to, to look at as a possibility. I don't think it'll be terribly expensive endeavor to do that, but
Is that something we go and get knocked out before September thirtieth?
Well, I was kind of waiting to see what the money looked like and then
Bring it to the court?
And bring it, yeah, if we had time and available funds.
I wouldn't go custom, but I would go some pre-built, some pre-built cabinets.
I, I was thinking, not necessarily, but Lowe's or Home Depot type of prefab.
That's all we know, so.
That's, yeah, something to that effect is all we need. No, we, I don't think we can custom stuff in there at all.
Well, Brian.
Have we, have we found all the leaks at the end?
No, last time we talked, the, he's looking at some pop-off valves that was hurting us on the new boiler system, and he was talking to George Wayne McKenna. Uh, everything was set like fifty seventy-five, and he said that he could go up to like a hundred twenty-five pounds or square inch if the unit will accept that. If the unit accepts that, because apparently we have some, it's like, once they pop, then they drain and run water until they shut down. So he says that that has been a huge issue. We have fixed a whole lot of leaks, we've put a whole lot of valves in where you can isolate the areas, you can stop the water from many areas. Your underground spring.
We don't have one in the parking lot, do we?
A leak?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
No.
What's the
We don't have one in the parking lot.
Do we know what the cause is? I mean, is it cold, because it's hot, or is it just old, or what?
The
What's the cause of the leaks?
The leaks, most of them is thirty, thirty-seven year old pipes. And some of us were coppers tied to plastic, coppers tied to pipe. Wade probably knows a lot more about, we met down there with him for about an hour or two here, what, a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, a lot of it's just been repaired over the years and wasn't repaired properly. I mean, we just had one a couple of years ago, it was on a forty-five blew out, and it had been there for decades. It decided to blow out the, but it was not done right. You don't put a forty-five on a two-inch line, it carries a hundred sixty psi.
It was all underground?
We got more force than that yesterday.
We were walking around in that boiler room, it's got those two water heaters, and they got pressure relief valves, those things keep leaking. He thinks that's where it's at.
That's what he was telling us, they kept popping off.
And I've replaced those, and it stopped for a while, and then it picked up again, so there's too much pressure going through that line, those pressure relief valves.
Cool.
And that's gotta get serviced by a mechanical company. I didn't know if y'all wanted to do that.
Is George Wayne Mechanical, they do them also?
They, they do nothing about it. So I was gonna call, I got with Mike over at Smith Supply, and he said Brant Mechanical out of Dallas is the one that put them in.
Okay.
So I called them, but I don't know if y'all, y'all want to get that fixed right now, do you want to make that expenditure?
We might as well look, see what it's gonna cost? Even if we sell it, yeah, we need to repair it, because there'll be some things that need to be repaired. Now, I can't make the call to expend the money till these folks vote on it, but we can get an, get an expense.
Okay.
And see what it'll cost us.
I got, I got a schedule to come down, but I was gonna cancel it if I needed to.
No, no.
No, don't do that.
Because we know that Wade talked down a thirty-eight thousand dollar water bill to about twenty thousand. He negotiated that down.
I mean, it's barely trickling, but that's where, that'd be where the water's going through.
Twenty-four hours a day matters. And I know y'all have isolated a lot of leaks, you put a lot of shut-off valves in, you've isolated that whole complex. But a lot of it is just thirty-seven year old. Because y'all have cut the saw cut the concrete, hell, Wade was showing me about ten different places in it.
I'll build it, yeah.
It's been saw cut.
It's just patching everywhere you can.
Band-aids.
It's immense.
Where's the tornado when you need it?
I know.
In Mississauga.
Yeah.
Question for you, can you change our nine thirty meeting to the afternoon tomorrow?
All right, yeah, what do you think, one thirty?
Yeah.
Two?
She said whatever time works, she's gotta take her daughter to the dentist at nine thirty, so if we can change it, then she can be their model.
One thirty?
Yeah, if that works.
Eric, some blood today, would you leave?
Sorry, Kelly, Trey just asked me, would you run and call Michael back and tell him when you change it to one thirty?
Cheers, buddy.
Yes, it does make me crazy. I'll spray it if you'll just leave me. If not, we break some from the house, man, I was forget. So if you got to put on my desk and I'll
She gonna call him and say?
Spray it and all. I ain't expecting you to come and do it, I can do it, but you don't have time to mess with it. But it's definitely not. I think one of these guys switched chairs with him, he's probably gonna I'm blaming my colleagues.
Wasn't me.
Yeah.
Y'all got anything else?
Hey, get to Eric.
Mr. Purgeite. We really appreciate it.
Thanks for everything.
Thank y'all for being easy to work with.
Let us know when you get your prices.
I guess you'll send me out whenever.
Yeah.
Yeah, just tell her, may if you don't mind on that, I'm at work and all that.
I was supposed to meet that guy at like one thirty.
Oven stove, whatever.
After that, I'll come get with you.
Thank you.
Do you run it on the agenda for Monday, so we can discuss, or not yet?
Well, I don't
I don't have the bids for it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Monday would be too quiet.
Let me know about tomorrow evening, if you've got anything you want to discuss for Monday, okay?
I should have the bids for the senior center replacement by Monday. I should have today, so.
Just let me know, and we'll get it on there for Monday to discuss. Thank you, man.
I appreciate it, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Come on down, Brian, you're up. And I didn't have copies, I asked you if you would make copies for everybody.
So that, I've got two columns there, one's the twenty twenty-four. One's this year.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
I just highlighted in green, like I usually do for increases.
Okay. And I want to see how many greens, that's a good thing. I might haven't got to the second page yet. Well, now I see the big one, five seventy, never mind, I'll shut up, yeah.
Well, like I said, I just want to put some stuff on y'all's radar, I'm not
Well, you want to start at the top and just go down through there? We'll follow you. Yeah, very bottom line.
One oh four, that went up. I told Nikki we'd give her a dollar an hour raise when she got her E and T certification. So that's two thousand maybe. Certpay, we've got several folks coming out of paramedic school. So that's the increase there for those people, assuming they all stay, I expect. We typically use one or lose one or two whenever we get a group out of paramedic school, so that, that may not go up that high. Firefighting supplies went up ten. We're, we're, we're getting a lot of fire hoses and stuff that's happening to be, that's failing, it's aging out.
Do those age out, or they test out?
Test out.
Both, I guess, yeah.
They're getting old and they're, yeah, they're So we test them every year at the beginning of the year.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
And the last few years has, has been pretty rough for us.
Right.
Down to mobile telephones, we're adding routers to some vehicles, and then we're putting, we're wanting to put tablets with the Zerkr and all the ambulances, the command vehicles, and like engine one, ladder one. So computer maintenance, that's, Eddie and I are still working through what the total cost would be, but that was his initial estimate was about thirty-two thousand to implement that, I think it's gonna come in way less than that, but
Why is, what, what are we talking about there, Brian?
You know how the, all those law enforcement vehicles have a pedestal and then a laptop? We're wanting to do some sort of mounts with tablets, but that'll, that'll give all the, the information from Zerkr, the dispatch information, directions, and I don't even know what else on Zerkr, but, but uh and then I can show in route and on scene just by pushing buttons. So I think, I think that's gonna come in way less, because I don't think we're, we're needing as heavy-duty mounts and stuff as what the sheriff's office has for their laptops.
Are y'all doing that in-house, or are you gonna send them off?
Uh, that'd be, for what I understand, Eddie would be doing it.
And Eddie did hire another personnel, if he can keep him, he's got another person now. He's had trouble, not because of him, but just because of the market, he's had trouble keeping good people.
Uh, uniforms going up to twenty, we, we've had a lot of volunteers this year, so we're having a hard time keeping up with uniforms for everybody. We've added fifteen at least this last year. So the big
Now for the big one.
It's five seventy, uh, there's some SC, SCBA bottles that are baged out, we need to replace. Brush one, our smallest brush truck is a two thousand seven, and we're starting to have a lot of issues with that. I'd like to get another one of those big Chevy trucks like we got this last year to replace one more douche and a half, one of those old military trucks. And then the big one is an ambulance. So on there, you'll see it says Fraser Ambulance, two ninety-five, that's just, that's for the ambulance, that's not including the cab and chassis either. They're hit so far behind, like Dodge won't even sell them vehicles anymore. So we'll have to go out and buy our own cab and chassis and then take it to them.
So three hundred, nine thousand dollars just for the module?
Correct, and an outfit.
Because it was running this, what, like four fifty to six hundred thousand on the last, by the time you fully equipped it?
Total would be, you know, three, three eighty-five, I think the last one was
And then by the time you
Shy, three fifty.
Medication and I forget what all began.
Which all that, most of that will transfer over, you know, all those, all the meds and a lot of the equipment and everything.
So that truck, you'll be going, it'll go out of service?
Yeah, it'll go to a reserve. That truck is a twenty-ten, I believe. So we're already a couple of years past where we should have been.
And those cabin chassis are valuable for you to get?
Yes, I mean, uh I went off their bid, they had eighty-six thousand on there, I think we'd have had a chassis cheaper than that. That, that last big truck we bought came in around seventy-three, I think. Some of this, I don't know if we can knock off with the sales tax.
And what I've been telling everybody, Brian, as you well know, you've done this many years, we put everything in worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
And then as we work through the next few weeks, we figure out what we can, and we'll, you know, trim and cut and go from there, because you know a question eventually gonna come down. If you had your pick of two or three of those, what would you put first, second, third?
The ambulance is, is highest priority.
Ambulance is number one right now?
Yeah, the, I mean, and the SCBA bottles we gotta have, but you know
Two, okay.
And then that, that smaller flatbed truck.
Thirty-five hundred?
Say that again?
The thirty-five hundred?
Yes, sir.
I'm just labeling them first, second, third, if I'm doing. And the problem with all of this, except for the bottles, we know there's a waiting period, six, twelve months, so you couldn't get any, any of this done by September thirtieth, except maybe the bottles, you might be getting that done by this year.
Yeah. Yeah, the even that ambulance, you know, the ambulance is, is an eighteen month.
So either we talked about it this budget cycle, we'd be looking at twenty-five, twenty-six before we actually spend the money.
What we have to do to budget for it, but keep it into another budget year.
Wade was saying in the last conference, they were told how they could do that Williamson County, is that what you told me? Or Williamson, how they could allocate it, put it aside and bring it back in next year?
Yeah, this lady was talking about, they were talking about the period between October one and January thirty-first, January third, whatever that may be, that they didn't have any money to buy, purchase these new items that they had proved on their budget. But everybody was complaining, they waited, had money in the bank. Well, the money in the bank was earmarked for purchases that were done that year, they're waiting, money's being held in, in accounts to pay those when they come in. So I don't know what the procedure is. Uh, Nikki, I'm not telling, not trying to do your business.
No.
But she, she volunteered that information out, just picked it up, you know? Because they were, because people were wanting stuff, they wanted to order stuff October one, well, the money's not there. So they get their taxes, they, they anyway, but there is money in the bank, well, she explained why there's money in the bank.
So they pulled it in and used it and replenished it in January thirty-first.
Yeah, well, they just left, you can't spend it, just because it's sitting there, we sold money in there, but that's variety for stuff that's been allocated by the court.
They had it like encumbered?
Yes.
Like we do on many different items?
Right.
It's encumbered to this expense?
Yeah, and it went from one year to the next.
Makes sense.
Even, even the big brush truck we ordered this year, you know, the, it took so long for them to build
I know.
The truck at the plant, we just got it, and now The truck at the plant, we just got it and now. We're in line at an outfitter, but I don't think it's going to be done before.
That's like a radio, Jeff and Brian, how much you think that we'll be able to pay, I know we paid roughly a million, roughly so far. You know, any more bills that'll be coming in for September thirtieth, we go and take out this year's budget that we allocated?
We're going to have to add. The panel we have now in the IT room will not support two twenty-five amp circuits. So they're going to have to split the box. So I've talked to. Man who's got.
Eric?
Yeah, sorry. He's getting the electrician in, so there's going to be an expense on us.
That was a one we weren't expecting. An expense we weren't expecting.
Correct. But they have to. Cause the panel in the back is full. And the worry's been all along that they won't support, I think the power coming in won't support an additional fifty amp. Fifty amps draw on that box.
Oh, coming into the building period?
Correct.
Could be a big issue.
Now, Eric seems to think the electricity, they could split it. I don't know anything about electricity, if they split it, we should be fine. But they're not, but I told them, well, that's, that's only on, I.
I don't either.
I don't know about that.
We're, uh. Right, we end the process on the radio system. As far as progress.
Well, I'm expecting the final two pieces of the radio tower. I'm sorry, the cabinet today. And the guy's going to come in tomorrow. To start setting it all up, he said his goal is January one flipping the switch.
Okay, that was my next question, as to when, when it looked like we'd convert it?
Pushing pretty hard for it to be prior to. But, and he hopes that we're not into February, but he's, his hope is by January one flipping the switch.
And that's off of money.
Being done.
And excused by ignorance on this, when it hits the ground, even though it's not actually hooked up in operation, when it hits the ground and we receive it. If everybody's good with it, we go ahead and pay for, for what we have received?
I think it's, yes, the equipment's been paid for.
Yeah, we've been paying a lot of.
Radios and stuff, I think, well, the invoices that come in for those.
Okay.
But the equipment we're still getting is part of that, some of that milestone stuff.
Okay.
And, uh. But they want to set up the radio towers and all that today, or this week, if they can, and let them start running. Cause they want to watch them for a month or two, just running, cause if they're going to fail, they said they'll fail then. That's why he's projected possibly a January one for switch. Cause it's coming in a lot quicker than I thought.
Good, and I know I'm repeating myself, but anything that we can pay that we allocated out of this budget, we need to go ahead and do, cause then we got to figure out, we know the money's there, we allocated, we just got to figure out how to bring it forward. And you know, it may appear to be a deficit budget, we know in our minds it's not a deficit budget, it appears to be a deficit budget because of the money's allocated, you just want to expend it. So then we got to figure out how to bring it forward for next year.
And I've talked to Valerie on that too, I've been talking with her as we go along, because it's ARPA funds that we're using. And she's taking it out of ARPA and knows it's not going to be done by October first.
And allocated and know where it's all.
Yes, she's, she's assured, she's keeping up on that end of it, so.
Perfect. Sorry, Brian, we got off track. But I know you're tied in with the radio system too, and your new computer system is probably going to be tied to it pretty heavily, I would imagine.
So what on the SCBA bottles? Did you mention any about possibly getting those now?
I did.
I thought that's what you said.
Y'all are good with it, I'll put it on the agenda for Monday, we'll discuss it in court Monday, and if y'all decide we want to spend that money, then we can go ahead and just get that done.
Yeah, we've got it.
If the court's ready, then we don't have to move that forward to next year.
We've got it, let's do it and get that, those out of date ones done.
Y'all can determine how y'all want to do it, if you want to do it out of your sales tax dollars for first responders, or if you want to do it out of your contingency that we struck you up to y'all.
That should be something that's available right now, right, Brian?
Should be.
Would you mind going ahead and checking, see if we can get them, and then I'll go ahead and have it on the agenda, and if you don't have the numbers, then we'll move on to the next agenda, but if you've got the numbers, we'll go ahead and just knock it out. Would you remind me to put something on Monday's agenda pertaining to Somerville County Fire Department? I do appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am. All right, anything else, Brian?
I just wanted to emergency management.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. I think the six hundred thousand, so I got my mind someplace else.
I didn't, I didn't change any of that.
We need to look at the, I think, I know we get reimbursed, but we pay for the code red and the IPAs upfront, and then, you know, the plant reimburses for a portion of that. I think that amount has went up to like between twelve and thirteen thousand. So if you don't mind, if you're good with that, we'll up that to fourteen thousand, if the court's good with that, we get all of the code red back and fifty percent of the IPAs back. But we normally pay it every April and then we get reimbursed in the summer. Nikki, I don't know if we've been reimbursed, I know we turned in invoices to be reimbursed.
I don't, you gotta read that.
And I know y'all probably know this, it comes back from the nuclear power plant. Because of the IPAs, the only reason we have it in place is because of the nuclear power plant.
Right.
What's that picture shit down there, man?
Uh, that is dues and publications at five forty, uh, five eighty-four hundred. Where we pay for that, the dues to have code red and IPAs.
How you want that at what?
Fourteen. Because you see, one year we spent fifteen thousand one hundred twenty-eight, that was above and beyond the code red and the IPAs.
What's the percentage of the plant pays, a hundred percent or fifty?
They pay a hundred percent on code red and fifty percent, no, I'm lying, they pay fifty percent on code red and a hundred percent on IPAs. The code red portion is about seven to eight thousand and the IPAs portion, I believe is, what is that, six to seven thousand, Brian? I don't have the invoices in front of me. Yeah, we split the code red and they pay a hundred percent IPAs. And I'm sure, y'all know, I'll repeat myself, you know, that is, it doesn't matter if your device is tied to the network or not as far as being in the list. If something really does melt down and there's a problem, it hits every device that's turned on at the time that incident happens. It doesn't matter if you're signed up or not, it hits your device.
Good, an amber alert.
You know, when you, when you get that one from Somerville County, well, yeah, you need to take that one seriously.
Pay attention to that one.
Yeah, that would be. Yeah. Might want to already be driving. That's true, we go through that in the drills every year. All right, anything else at all, Brian?
On the trucks that you're looking at, thirty-five hundred and sixty-five hundred. You said that we have one now. That, that you're talking about replacing, or is that two you're talking about replacing?
So we just got one this, like, a week ago to replace one of the, you know, the big flat nose army trucks.
So you're looking to replace another one?
Yeah. They've not been reliable.
Do those things, as, the ones we have as they stand, have any value at all? I know the place probably won't take a trade. Are they auctionable? I mean, I don't want to see them go down and sit in the pasture and deteriorate.
I was gonna, at one time.
We can get five thousand dollars for them.
Mark had a trade in. Worked out with the outfitter. Uh, that's been. Five or six years ago.
Right.
Cause we denied, we were getting another one of those flat nose Stewart Stevenson's and we just, we declined it because we've been having so many issues with them.
Okay.
The older trucks. We're keeping those, the old deuce and halves, but it's those. Flat nose Stewart Stevenson's, they just keep, we've been through five of them, I think, and we only have one.
Very unreliable.
The new truck we got is replacing one of those that has, had a blue engine in it.
Heard Wade talk about them many times.
Yeah.
So we're just, and it's getting ordered and ordered, find anybody that can work on those, that older stuff.
I just wondered if there was an option out there to trade or sell or whatever, and just.
One more sale, if we sold them around eight and a bake, I'm sure we could get probably.
Get something.
Get, get a good price for them.
I, I don't know that we'd get that much out of it, but it'd be something.
Better than, than, sit down there and rock.
Anything better than other.
Exactly, exactly, right.
And Brian, I was mistaken, I didn't, I'm not rushing you, Emma.
No, not at all, I'm done, thank you.
We need to go back to emergency management and talk about the five eighty-nine hundred, that management equipment and grant, because we had that two million fifty thousand in there. And I was going to cover certain things, that money, that particular amount's not going to be there this coming year.
Yeah.
So that will need to be reduced by. Yeah, because fifty thousand we could bring in from the plant and then we expend that back out through emergency services, but.
Or is that? Or is that higher plant money in professional services?
Yeah, that's, that's actually as we expended out. And I guess we show it as income, we show it on the front two pages, don't we, on the grant, so we'll have to modify that too. But I know this expenditure that we're showing right here, two million is, yeah, is not going to be there this year.
Well, I mean, it's, that's what we set aside for the, for the building, wasn't it?
Yeah. So what do you think, keep it set aside for, because we're working toward that, we've got the bids out.
If we haven't spent any money, we should be able to just put it back in there, I would think.
There's where the question going to come, Nikki, how would?
I think we can, we can, we can do that.
Figure out how to account for it?
Yeah, as long as it's, everybody understands what we're doing.
Right, that's the biggest goal and the key right there. So, everybody's comfortable right now, leaving it like it is until we see what we do with the building and then Nikki tells us how we bring that money forward.
Yep.
Cause we did not expend any of it on that particular item. All right, anything else, Brian?
Nope.
What's the progress on the building?
We just went out, I'm sorry.
Out for bid for. What were we, the contractor or project?
Build design.
Yeah, the managers.
They won't, they won't come back in until the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Maybe we can discuss it in August or wort it, and then we can move forward with that. That'd be great.
Project manager bids, yeah.
And I think we received the last pallet of lights last night, yesterday evening, so we should be able to start this project within the next week or two.
That is going, great.
We have a lot of that money expended before September thirtieth also. All right, Brian, now I say, you done? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what we told everybody else, Brian, you know, the court doesn't have a clue whether they're going to set yet on three percent, five percent, if any, we don't know what the benefits insurance is going to be. As we look through that, then, you know, we'll know by August fifteenth when we file the proposal. All right, Kelly, I guess you're next. You made plenty of copies?
I did.
Thank you. Don't get bruised up before she gets this table. And what we've been doing, the reason I asked for six, Kelly, was so Nikki would have one along with us, so she could keep track.
Actually, nine one six.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll also add some extra stuff too.
Oh, very good.
Explanation and a lot of more.
Oh, I see. Revenue event advertising, so is associated, so I was focusing on some of our building and. Front and back. As Kelly, as you well know, you and I have discussed briefly on the future of where we all go with the CBB and how we do and what we do and so on and so forth.
Yes, sir.
So we'll see what, where the court decides they want to go and where they lie and all that good stuff. So anyhow, you fire away, Kelly, you know, start at the top and.
Well, I. I put the numbers on, in the blue column. And then the green column is from the golf course, uh, in the past when I was just county tourism. Golf course paid for theirs, but I represented them and the expo paid for theirs, I represented them. So, since we're back to just being the county. Um, I got the prices for what the Texas Golf Insider Magazine would be. Um, that we're advertised in every month, we also do podcasts with them on their Facebook page. Uh, Avid Golfer is another one that we do. And then the golf show. Uh, so that would need to come out of the golf course if they still would like for me to represent them with the booth and do their ads and all that stuff. I typed this up just to kind of give a little explanation for each of the different line items. Um, our hotel tax has been down some this year, but I've been talking to Airbnb, uh, as you know. They only send a check without any description or name or how much each particular person they're collecting from. So I don't know how many are going to the city and how many are actually coming to us, but I have gone through all of Airbnb. Uh, for Somerville County. Airbnb facilities. I can't get addresses on them or names on them, but I can get the link and I've been talking to them. And I sent them over fifty links that are inside the county. That I don't, I know we're not collecting from all of them, if we were to be able to collect from those, that'd be probably double, more than double the county's, the hotel tax. I'm also asking Airbnb to send me a contract like they have with the city, uh, to collect the county hotel tax. I still won't know who it's coming from, but if they do that, they will collect from everyone that's on Airbnb, the local hotel tax.
Kay Myers has been on us and I haven't known, answering questions, she wants to know how we find the ones that are not on the radar, not paying. And this is one way that Kelly's found, maybe she can find some of them, because you know, it's easy. When Kelly and Pearl and Valerie send out the notices, we know the ones, and when they don't pay, Trey follows up with a letter. But the ones like Kay's talking about, they've never been on our radar, they may be on Airbnb and VRBO.
And HomeAway, now, there's, the city has a contract with Airbnb and one with HomeAway to collect the local hotel tax for the city, the problem has been is that. Apparently Airbnb and HomeAway believe that the seven six oh four three address is all of glamorous.
Right.
And it's not. You know, so that's where a lot of it's getting messed up. So I did send them the notice once I went through all of it and told them which ones are county that do not need to be sent to the city.
Right.
And not trying to bring up bad blood, but we went through this Michael Lemmons and we pretty much got stonewalled on how we were going to deal with the city to get that money that was actually in the county.
Yeah, they don't, they didn't care.
So as we get more data, then we'll go back and we'll talk with them again to see.
Right, because these that are on Airbnb that we're not able to collect from are very expensive Airbnbs. A lot of them are up in Chalk Mountain, their resorts.
Right, Chalk Mountain.
Walnut Springs address.
And you know, that's what's unique to Somerville County, I know it's weird, you know, being a small county, we still have five different zip codes.
Right.
And you know, you have Bluffdale, Walnut Springs, Johnson, Cleveland, uh, you have many different addresses, but it actually all comes to, or supposed to come to, Somerville County.
Which is why I went through every single item that they had, now, I have not done HomeAway yet, but most of the time HomeAway and Airbnb are the same. I did go on VRBO, which is the one Cave on Arizona. Uh, and everything on VRBO is captured on Airbnb as well, so, you know, Airbnb looks like to be our best source to be able to collect everything that we are due.
All right, sorry, Kelly, we got you set.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
So, um. Let's see here. Also, um, the new website that we're developing is just about finished. And what we've done on that is actually highlight all the county lodging partners that we have. With pictures, with amenities, with all that stuff. Those are the ones we're going to be pushing for people to stay at, you know, go to. Those are the ones we're gonna be pushing for people to stay at, you know, go to, uh, you know, cause that's what our bread and butter comes from. This highlighting on those, you know, as we get more, if they find out that we're, if we do an agreement with Airbnb. And people start finding out that they're collecting the local hotel tax to send to us, then they, maybe they'll come to me and find out what's going on and we can add them to the website as well. But my main goal is to promote our lodging facilities that are in the county. So, on the event, does he have any other questions on the possibility of raising more revenue? Okay. On the event fees revenue, uh, three sixty-two hundred. I have not put anything in there. Um, I still have budgeted for, uh, two, three events. One is the, what was called the Moonshine Festival last year, calling it the Heritage Festival this year. To kinda incorporate all of Somerville County's heritage and it starts back to the dinosaurs all the way up to today. Then the, uh, Plexi River Fest, which was not able to be last year, but this year, um, the commission at that time wanted me to continue doing it. And I, I have a group that can help me continue that next year. This year, we did the Friday Night Floats with, uh, Kay Hits. And the idea is to kick it off with the Plexi music, uh, Plexi River Fest and go right on into Friday Night Floats. So, there'll be music for the home of the teens in that one. So, the event, event fees would be any, um, vendor spots that we sell, any sponsorships that I can get, you know, for the events. That type of stuff and that's hard to, you know, determine, uh, how many you're gonna get for each of those. So, there will be, uh, revenue, but I don't have a clue what it's gonna be.
We understand.
And it also depends on if y'all want me to continue with events or not.
Right. The whole future as a whole?
Yes. As far as advertising goes, um, my advertising, I have out to the right, uh, how much and, and who. AJR Media, and I've got it written in the typed up person portion. AJR Media is who I go through where we get most of our leads from. Uh, they do, through them, I get, I get in the Texas State Travel Guide, which is given out to anybody who calls the state asking for information on Texas. Uh, it's also Texas Highways Magazine. There is an ad in that from us. The Texas Events Calendar that we can put our events on. That, uh, they do that four times a year, uh, during each season, so, you know, we can put that on there. Uh, Tour Texas, which is where we get our leads and the Native Texas Campaign. Now, I don't have to, uh, sign a contract for all of those. We can remove some of those if y'all wish, need to lower that a little bit. But Tour Texas, uh, since October first last year, we've had eleven-hundred-and-ninety-two leads. And so we've sent out eleven-hundred-and-ninety-two magazines to people who have requested information from Tour Texas. Texas Highways, they just started sending leads in February of this year. So, so far, we've received thirty-one leads from them. They send them to us weekly, both of them. Uh, so they got sent magazines and before the Explorer Glen Rose website got shut down, we were getting leads from that as well. On our new website, we are also setting up a form where people can fill that out and send it, you know, send it in through our website to get more information, so we can send leads out to them as well, so.
Y'all still do the magazine that all the tourist incomes?
Yes, I have to, but the city was not using any of the magazines. So, uh, we have collected all of the magazines so that we can continue sending those out, uh, for people to have information. And also, the Tourism Information Centers request a lot of those magazines. Other CBBS request those magazines. So, it, it's a, it's a very valuable marketing tool for Somerville County. I did not include any money to do a new magazine this year. I feel like we have enough to get through this year without having to recreate a new one. So, I'll just work from that. Tried to cut this back as much as I can. Also, so that was AJR, who all they have. As far as Hank FM, Kay Hits Radio Advertising, I have, uh, they've given me a prize for advertising for the Heritage Festival. For the Plexi River Fest and Friday Night Floats, which they helped sponsor the bigger cases. And for, uh, an annual contract to where they promote Somerville County every other week on the weekends with radio ads, which we can change regularly to, you know, if there's something special that we want to promote. Or whatever, we, we can change that ad regularly that's bringing people to Somerville County. Uh, so that really helps out a lot. So those are, those are the only advertising besides the golf course ones that, uh, I'm requesting, uh, like I said, uh.
Me and Jeff, we need to remember to talk about the ones in green with Jeff. I know it's not gonna happen next week, but anyhow.
Yeah.
We just need to remember to discuss that with him.
You know, the main two on the advertising from AJR, I believe is the Texas State Travel Guide, Texas Highways Magazine and Tour Texas. You know, if I'm only gonna do a couple of events or no events, you know, it might not be feasible to, uh, purchase that one. That's almost a thousand dollars. Um, and the Native Texan is a spring campaign with six fun things to do in Glen Rose, which is thirty-five-hundred dollars. So we could knock off close to forty-five-hundred dollars off of that amount, which is. The whole, all of it is twenty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. If you get it less than twenty thousand for that, if you so choose. Any other questions on the advertising?
Don't look like it.
Okay. Tourism shows, um, I have not planned on going to any large shows. But I've created a lot of relationships in the state, which I would like to, to keep up with. One of the shows is the State Fair. Uh, every year I go to the State Fair for a full day to work in the Texas Travel Booth. Um, and we get a table to promote Somerville County and talk to people all about Somerville County. I usually do it on Columbus Day just because it's a holiday and there's a lot of people that come through at that time. That only costs us about fifty dollars for that one day space, so. And then, um, the Travel Expo is actually, um, through Texas Travel Alliance. And it is where, I call it speed dating. It's speed dating of all the travel information centers. All the employees that work for the State of Texas Travel, Travel Information Centers and so forth. Through those relationships, I have several of them that ask me to come to their travel information center at certain times of the year to set up a booth about Glen Rose to share, you know, what we have here in Somerville County. And that doesn't cost us anything. So I've already been once this year. They want me to come back in September. However, I think I just realized the date they sent me was my daughter's wedding week, so I may not be able to.
Might not be good, yeah.
Yeah, they usually do a big one, uh, during the Texas OU game and that's when they bring me up there, cause everybody's crossing the border to come to that. And that's always a good one, but I don't think I can do it this year. But it, it does maintain those relationships with all of those travel information counselors and that's very important to have. So that's about, that's all I've budgeted for, uh, the county CBB as far as going places. With the exception if the, uh, golf course decides they want me to go to the golf show. Usually they have me go. I work the booth the entire time. Steve and Jeff come. Steve usually comes two days, almost all day. Jeff usually comes for one day. They're not in the booth a lot, so, uh, that would be up to them. Any questions on the shows? Move on. Association dues, um, at one point when I first became the county, uh, tourism director, I was asked to maintain all the relationships I had, you know, organizations, associations and all that stuff. When we split with the city, I, I was only a member of just a couple of those organizations. Texas Travel Alliance and, uh, Texas Association of Venues and Facilities. Texas Association of Venues and Facilities, I'm a member of because it's all about places like the expo, the rooster, places where we can host events and stuff. And through that organization, I don't know if y'all remember the, um, booth that I had purchased, uh, when I was, we were sitting on county. That was through a vendor that's a member, associate member of that organization and they get seventy percent off of their supplies. Um, there's also like another vendor that does the replacement, uh, divider walls like there are at the Expo Center, which they need badly to be replaced. So it's very beneficial to be in there. Plus it also helps answer questions on how do, how do you guys handle, uh, alcohol in the building? Or how do you, you know, what do you do as far as this type of contract or, or that type of stuff? So those are the only two that I have been currently associated, uh, associated with, with the exception of THLA. THLA is the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association. The county used to pay for all of the lodging partners in the city and the county to have a membership to it. That was close to eight thousand dollars. We cut that out this year and we just did an individual membership through myself, which is four hundred dollars. I can still call on behalf of my lodging partners and ask legal questions. So that is our way of finding out if this is legal, if this is not legal. What are the new state laws as far as hotel tax goes? Uh, what's the direction that the legislation is going as far as hotel tax and that type? So that's, that's a very important organization. That's four hundred a year. Uh, TTA is Texas Travel Association. That is another valuable association. That goes over our legislation changes in hotel tax. It's very, very informative as far as, uh, what all's happening in the travel and tourism industry. TXAF is like two hundred dollars a year. TACBB is the Texas Association of CBBS. I've been a member, I've been a board member for that organization in the past. That's where all the tourism facilities go for their annual conference. Uh, they have different types of classes for, you know, new updates on, uh, how to storytelling, you know, for your CBB and, and all kinds of stuff. So it can be very informative. I already have my, uh, DMO through there, which is a certification. It's my destination management, uh, organization person, so I've already got that. But they, it does have some good information there, but it's not one that I would have to go to. But it does keep my relationships out in the state. I have a lot of far-reaching relationships, you know, the less I'm seen, the, the more I'm forgotten, but that's okay. And then the Lakes Trail, we get exhibits from the Lakes Trail. Some of y'all may have gone to the Kona Park exhibit that we held at Bernard's Mill. And the, uh, Women in Aviation, those are, those all come from being a member of the Texas, uh, Trails, Lakes Trails. They also do different traveling to different facilities, travel information centers and that type of stuff. In order to get to the State Fair, to have, be able to have a booth, you need to be a member of the Texas Lakes Trail. So, any questions on the association dues? Kinda lined it out on this printed thing, if y'all understand, what each of them are.
Don't sound like it. I said, doesn't sound like it. Move on.
Okay, on, uh, salaries, all I keep in is salary for myself and for Pearl. I'm not requesting another event coordinator. It actually would be cheaper for me to hire an actual production company, uh, to help out with those events. Than to hire an event coordinator. And so, I have not put them in there. It's just mine and Pearl's, uh, salary, insurance, retirement, all that stuff. Postage, three-ten. Of course, it runs high because we do mail out those magazines to every person asking for information. But I feel that's vital, otherwise they wouldn't have information on Somerville County. Our website will also have search engine keywords that will send people directly to our website. So that's gonna be beneficial as well. But, yeah, the magazines cost a little bit more to, uh, mail out, but they are certainly well-received. And instead of mailing boxes to a lot of our travel information centers, the one that, the ones that request them, from us the most are on the Louisiana line and the Oklahoma line. And those I tend to just, I'll just drive to those three, you know, in a day or so and drop those off. Just cheaper to do that than to mail the three, two or three boxes to them each time they're requesting it. The computer, what I put on there under computer supplies, I'm not sure where y'all want this, but, you know, we did sign a contract with our, my web developer. For him to develop website, to maintain it, to add pictures, to, you know, do all of that, so that's what I put. I put that under, uh, four hundred. Six forty-nine, four hundred. No, no, six forty-nine, three twelve. Seminars, um, I'm putting the conferences under seminars. That's the only place I could find where to go. Uh, the seminars, I went in and got estimated prices for the next few years or this coming up year. TTA, TTIA is approximately, and this includes hotel, uh, seminar fee, mileage and meals. Uh, TTIA is thirteen-hundred-and-fifty, TXAV is, uh, eight-hundred, TACBB is eighteen-fifty. So, be up to you to decide which one you want me to go to. And then, the building and grounds, four-fifty. Since y'all agreed to, uh, go at the rental of the office space at Bernard's Mill, I added that amount under building and grounds. And then the last thing is the event fees. It's much like, um, the above. I have talked to the production company that I'm interested in using and approximately fifty thousand is just an estimated number. For all the events that I'm talking about there.
You think that will cover all of them, pretty much?
Pretty close, yes, sir. I mean, and I'm talking bands and stages and all of this.
Turnkey counter.
Turnkey kinda thing, yes. And that's all I have. I did include in your packet, uh, since there's, the hotels tax two-step, uh, pages. There are only nine things that hotel tax can be used for. And so this kind of, uh, lines that out for you. And, um, just to give you a little bit of information, I know there's been some talks with the city. The city has the Book of Glen Rose Facebook page and I know she does a lot of videos and posting emojis and stuff on that. But people don't know, kinda get to the Facebook page, they don't know what this. She rebranded, you know, I'm rebranding. So, by getting out there and being in those magazines, that gets the name out for people to come in, you know, and ask for information or to come here. So it's not just social media, it's the websites, it's the social media, it's the ads, it's the radio representation. It's representing the county with the golf courses, the expo, county. the Expo, county lodging. Also in our department, something you might not be aware of, but we do all the rentals for the county. Community center, all the parks. Pearl checks the community center, picks up the keys, make sure everything's good. She books over one of those things. And she answers all the questions. When we did split, we kept the original number for the CBB, which has been that number for the last 10 years. So anybody who's been familiar with us, that's the number. And that's the number that's still on the magazine. Our PO box is still on the magazine. We kept that PO box as well. So most everything we have out right now under our new logo has the phone number that's been there forever and the PO box that's been there forever. So that helps. And when people call, people come in from out of state and even from the state down in the Houston area because they want Pearl. And they bring more people back. And they always come back in and say hi to Pearl and introduce her to the people that they brought. Pearl being bilingual has helped expand our diversity and new people that come in. We answer calls. We mail out all the magazines. The city does not have a tourism center where people can actually go in and ask for information, pick up information, which is something that's very much needed. You know, we used to keep a record of how many people came into the center every day. Now I'm going to start having Pearl do that again with all the phone calls that she takes, you know, pertaining to CBB and all the visitors that come in, you know, to get information, find out stuff. I mean, basically she's the Yellow Pages for Glenrose. If anybody needs a, Danny's phone number or whatever they call us because we're supposed to know everything, which is fine. She also recommends when people call to ask about where to stay, she recommends county lodging places first. So that's very beneficial. We do represent all the attractions. Now the city represents some of the attractions, but there are some that they kind of refuse to represent, such as the Creation Evergreens Museum. I know when I first got here, that was a point of contention. People thought it was like, you know, a wacko place and who wants to go there. So I've worked my butt off in the last 12 years trying to turn around the reputation of that place with what all they have. You can believe what you want to about evolution or creation or whatever.
Everybody's on the lead.
But the things in that museum are amazing. So I've worked my tail off getting that out there. And I work very well with all of the people, with all of our attractions. All the attractions are in the county. I don't mind doing events. And I've done some very, very successful events. We represent throughout the state. Also on hotel tax, those that we know of, we send out a notice every month to remind them that their hotel tax is due on the 20th of each month. We don't know how much they had, you know, how much was turned in or how many people stayed there. But we send them a notice to remind them, oh yeah, I need to pay this. And that's not currently being done, you know, with the city. I will also say one other thing is the city has spent money on this geo fence tracking to track how many tourists come into downtown. According to Rita's results is that the historic downtown brings in more tourism, the fossil rim, dinosaur valley, state park and everything. My, I've been on about that program for years. I didn't use it because it tracks every single cell phone. It doesn't know if you're a tourist or if you're working here. So, you know, I may drive down here five times a day, which looks like we've had five tourists come downtown, you know, in the day. Everybody who comes to work here. Everybody who goes to build a 144 to go out of town. They're all being counted as tourists for the downtown area. So that is one reason why I have never used that because I feel it like it's false information. So that's my spiel.
Same to you. Well, let's just talk about the elephant in the room as we move forward so we don't give you any false hope. You know what I'm saying? If we're talking about, you know, paring the CBB down, if we're talking about someday moving out of it, we just need to discuss it as a whole so everybody's on the same page, you know? So, you know, if you get a year's budget, cool. Then you know you're good till next year. Then maybe you don't get the next year's budget. I don't know everybody and everybody's thoughts, okay? But I figured something that maybe we ought to discuss to see what our future holds as we move forward.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, know what my future entails if I'm going to be able to retire from here or if I'm going to be gone in a year. My main concern right now is Pearl. When we combined with the county, we...
She took a leap of faith to come over with this.
Promised Pearl that we would take care of her as far as insurance and all that stuff. If y'all do decide to make the decision to dissolve the county CBB, I feel like it would be a mistake. But I understand people saying, why do we have two doing the same thing? I don't do the same thing she does. We don't. She's a marketer. She's buying stuff for people to buy once they get here. But that's not getting people here. The point of tourism is to get out there and get people to come to Glenrose. You don't get people to come to Glenrose on a Facebook page by telling them you have mugs to sell for $30 or you have free t-shirts or you have t-shirts yourself. That's only if you're already here. So it's up to you guys. You know, I can still retire if y'all are so deemed that you want me gone in a year or want to dissolve the CBB. But I think y'all need to take into consideration everything that I've actually done and how much I actually promote. And to be honest, I mean, we run the Somerville County, Texas Facebook page, which has been used during COVID to burn out announcements about, you know, statistics each month. You know, I've helped do a lot of PR for the fire, you know, on that and type of stuff like that. So we've stepped in a lot of places that CBB don't normally step in. But my main concern is to make sure that we take care of Pearl if y'all decide to get rid of me.
And y'all can blame me for bringing this up because Kelly and I have talked about our future many times last few weeks. We, what, last three, four, five weeks? We talked about it many, many times on where we're headed, what we're doing, what the courts will do and not do. It's strictly their total decision. But I just feel like, you know, that as a whole, we need to discuss it because you and I have discussed it many, many times.
I would like to know what the reasons would be.
Well, my opinion is it was successful before we got in with the city.
Yes.
And my gut feeling was when we got in with the city, we shouldn't have done that. And I should have known better because it played out just the way I thought it would play out. And now you're trying to start over. I understand the numbers look a little weak right now, but I think it will improve as we go along to get back where we were before because it was working. I mean, the golf course, I mean, and all the stuff, the advertising you do and the events you hold. I think we'll, once you get all this, the payments going to where they're supposed to be going. And I think it's a good thing. I think it's something we can support and I think the sales tax can support it.
I just, I understand that the numbers look a little weak right now. The only thing saving us right now is that county sales tax can be used for tourism until I can get this up, you know, through Airbnb, HomeAway or whatever.
Do you mind? It may be right in front of me, Kelly, and I'm not seeing it. And I apologize for that. If we take away the salary of the assistant and we take away some of the travel shows and we take away some of the advertising, do you mind by the end of July, like come back and say, okay, this is exactly what we'd be expending because...
Tell me which ones you want me to mark out.
Well, I can answer the question for you. You tell us which one you think's the best to go to.
There you go. Pair it down and see what we should keep, what we should do away with because that's who work our way. And I'm not speaking for y'all guys. I'm not speaking for anybody. I'm just asking, as we work our way through July before we get to August 1st, then we can say, okay, if we do this, this and this, this is the only number we'd use out of sales tax to keep you going. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, yeah, you say, yeah, whatever. Like what you said, out of those one, two, three, five shows, which ones you think you ought to do? Out of the events, which ones you ought to do? The money you ought to expend, so on and so forth.
I think that State Fair is a big deal. I think that's a...
Oh, it's only $50. I mean, I'll pay the $50. Seriously. $50 for a full day of advertising at the State Fair.
Yeah, and Jeff can help. Jeff can help out on this side over here because right now we've got it in a good position. We're, not that we want to get it in a bad position again, but we've got it in a good position where it can take care of itself and maintain itself. And then relieve the sales tax of that expense.
For the advertising, yes.
Yes. And then...
How many shows were there? Actually, three that you got here?
Shows, yeah. The Travel Expo is 450. That one I feel is invaluable. That's our once a year time to talk to all the travel information counselors, find out how the magazine's doing, find out, you know, what they have coming up, then finding out what we have coming up, what's new, all that kind of stuff. I mean, that, those two are $500.
Right. Well, you know, I can't, you tell us what's the best one and that's all we're good.
Yeah, you give us, you know, exact what it would take, how the sales tax keep you alive.
And I can pair down, just lost all my paperwork. Oh, there it is.
Doing away with salaries and benefits as they use.
Salaries, I mean, that can't, that's not going to change.
Right. But doing away with that one position.
Doing away with the other position. That was 45, not counting insurance, retirement, workman's comp, all of that stuff. So actually it was a little more than 45,000.
One of the things I would like to look at, Kelly, and it's no secret, I've mentioned this before, I think you and I have talked about it before, is the productions. Us being in the production business, is it worth it? I realize it's a great thing and I enjoy the shows first and foremost. Let me make that clear. I thoroughly enjoy going to these events that we put on. I think it's really good for the community. What I'm asking is, does it bring you enough to make it worth it? That's, and I don't know that you know that, I don't expect you to know those numbers right now off the top of your head. But that's what, I know it brings a lot of folks in to the city or to the community, don't get me wrong. But those folks are eating, for the most part, if they're not doing the food truck thing, they're eating in town. They're staying if they stay, not all, but a lot are staying in town. Again, I'm not saying let's take away from the city or the city, you know, I don't want the city to make money because if somebody's doing it, we're all doing it. That kind of thing.
Everybody's successful, everybody's successful.
Right, exactly.
That's why I pair it back to just two events, Jeff, because those two events are three-day events. So, and the River Fest was extremely successful with people coming and staying. They still want to come back. You know, the whole point was people be able to come out and listen to music all day, walk the river all day. They do it the next day, you know. We made those to where they were events that people would want to come and stay over. Same thing with the Moonshine Festival slash Heritage Festival. You know, everybody wants to come and listen to some music and taste the moonshine or whatever.
Right, I dig it. Like I said, I enjoy them.
I'm just saying that's the reason why I wanted those two. If they're only one day events, it's not really any purpose in doing it because they, you know, one day they'll come, they'll stay late, they'll drive back home. It's trying to get people here to come and stay and doing it through our website. And they see, because we have some amazing lodging in this county. Some of it has been on the cover of Southern Living Magazine.
Yeah, no doubt, no question.
On the cover of Texas Highways Magazine.
Yeah, no question. This is a great place to come and visit and hang out. And I hear people tell me that wherever I go.
Right.
Of people from all over telling me they know where Glenrose is and love to come here.
You know, I've been doing this for 11, 12 years now here in Glenrose. Pretty much dedicated my life to this. But when I first started out in tourism, people were asking where I was from, I'd say Glenrose. They'd be like, where's that? Then I'd have to say, you know, where Granbury is. And they're like, oh, yeah. I'm over 15 minutes from Granbury. I will say, in my years of pushing Glenrose, pushing Glenrose, pushing Somerville County, I don't have to mention Granbury.
A pinball in the swamp.
I do not have to mention Granbury.
You're right, I totally agree.
I say Glenrose, they're like, oh, yeah. Y'all are those dinosaur people.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Dinosaur, moonshine, nuclear power.
Dinosaur, moonshine, you know, all about our history. So do you want me to just come back or you want me to tell you what I think that can...
Yeah, if you can just get us to like 17th or 24th of July, about 31st when we're going through our actual talks, and you come back and you say, this is the amount that I've got coming in. This is the amount that it would take off sales tax to get us through this year. And then if we...
We'll see God, that was next year.
Here again, I'm speaking for the court. Right, if we say, okay, then the sales tax, they're not sales tax. Hot tax does start increasing over the next years as we start trying to accumulate from all these folks that we know we're not collecting from. Then we may have a bigger budget to work from. If we don't have a bigger budget to work from, then next year we look at it and say, yeah, this damn thing ain't working or this damn thing is working. You know what I mean? And that's no disrespect to you. I think you know that from me. That's no disrespect because...
Like I said, I'd just like to hear the reasoning of getting rid of us. Y'all can hear me, your concerns.
Well, I mean, I'm of a different opinion, I guess, everybody. But in the last year, I just, I just haven't seen this move forward in any way. Anything, nothing, nothing positive has come out of CBB. Nothing, I don't think. Everything has been a failure, you know? And it's nothing personal. I don't even really know you. I just think that... And it has to do with moving a lot, I think.
Well, moving a lot, transition from the city to county.
Yeah, but that wasn't all her fault.
It wasn't all her fault, I realize that. But, you know, you had the Peluxi Fest that you canceled. And then...
Weren't there reasons for that?
And then there's, there wasn't a good turnout. I had a lot of calls on the floating Peluxi or whatever. Well, it wasn't floating Peluxi. It was the bands on Friday night. It wasn't long enough. Of course, we had personnel problems.
Well, I wish you'd let me know on that, but I do know the people that did come, we talked. Next year, if we're doing this, we'll be changing the time to six to eight, to seven to nine, so more people can come afterward. So it, you know, that was a...
This was a first time tryout, right? For Friday night, I think? You got to try things out first before you judge it.
And Richard, I don't know if you went to the Peluxi, River Fest the year before when I did it.
She inherited that.
And it was hugely successful.
I did, I did, y'all.
We had thousands of people coming.
And I don't understand why it was canceled. You know, the city was able to pick it up and move forward with it in a week's time. And it was successful.
And it lost $33,000.
Why couldn't we have done that? It would have probably been bigger.
Because it was, at the time that I realized that she had not done what she was supposed to have been doing all along, I had no bands scheduled, I had no vendors scheduled. It was already the end of May and this was supposed to happen May 31st. There was no way I could get, you know, at that time too, I was trying to run the Expo. There was no way I could hire 20 bands in two days with 30-day notice as well as vendors. And so...
But you supervised that. You supervised all that. You really go to it. It was your responsibility.
It is. And, but if your person won't tell you what they're doing or how far they are, it's kind of hard for me to find out. I mean, I can go in there and ask, how are we? I have to, went in there, how are we doing? Oh, we're doing great, we're doing great. Nobody did what he had. Well, I've got a few, you know, so, yeah, Richard, I mean, I didn't go into that, but...
And not trying to defend Kelly or anybody that we had, yeah, the end of last year and the first part of this year was very tumultuous with all the folks that we put in and out of the expo, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, I think you expected more out of that person, I think that person expected more out of you, and then things just dissolved into a total disaster. But, and again, I'm not trying to defend anybody, I'm just trying to say, the last three months of last year and the first three months of this year were pretty much total hell, wouldn't you say?
It was a mess.
It was very, very tumultuous, now, will we move forward?
I will say this, in reference to you, Richard, you're not saying anything good come out of the C V B, I'll promise you, when you shut us down, you'll see a big difference. There's gonna be a huge difference, so.
I didn't support the splitting of the C V B, I didn't, I thought you should have hung onto that and just rode it out and promoted Glen Rose and some of them, I wasn't a supporter of that, but it split, and like I said, I haven't seen anything really, really positive. So, maybe you're right, I don't know.
And the reasoning for that was what? Because they were accusing you of stuff?
Yeah.
That was a whole nother nightmare.
Yeah, another nightmare.
So, we weren't getting reports, we weren't being honest.
There are a lot of things that we do that bring people to this town that y'all, nobody ever even thinks about, you know, the amount of magazines we mail out to people or bring in. Pearl puts personal messages in some that come through that said that I have three kids that we're bringing in, you know, she'll put little dinosaurs in the, you know, thing for them, to make it feel like, you know, they're special. That's, you know, I'm just saying, there are a lot of things, and the golf course would not be doing as good as they are if I was not at golf shows, if I was not advertising in the golf magazines for creating those ads and all that stuff, so, you know, I respect your opinion, Richard, I just think you need to maybe understand a little bit more about the situation and ask more questions, 'cause I know you've never come to talk to me about the tourism department. Jeff?
I'm stuck on the productions, I'll be honest, okay? That's the doors I keep beating on. No, 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 that's not what I'm necessarily saying, okay? Where do we stand with the city picking up this festival they picked up last year? Are they expecting to do it again, or are we expected, I mean, we need to, I'm just asking, are we communicating that?
It was told to the city administrator when they asked if they could do it, and Wade, you can tell, it was told to them that, yes, if they want to do that, they can do it this year, but it is not gonna be called the Poluxi River Fest, and we will be doing it again next year on the River.
I understand.
So, it's, what they did was really not the point of why people came to the River Fest, and you can see that from the attendance that they had.
Well, and what, and I know I'm saying bad words here, okay? I know I am, but I'm gonna say them anyway. What about partnering with them on some of these festivals? Yeah, I said it, my God, I said it.
You're trying to give me cuss on recognition.
I ain't trying to, I'm not trying to raise the roof, I'm not trying to make the roof collapse. I'm just throwing, because it brings people into both freaking...
I agree.
C V Bs, and I know there's a lot of animosity, I realize that, and I'm not saying we gotta do it, I'm just saying what if? I'm just throwing out the thought. And I already, I saw the daggers flying at me from my compadres over here.
I don't have a problem asking them, you know, like on this production company, you know, fifty thousand, they wanna go half on that.
I guess that's what I'm talking about, looking at the possibility, I'm not saying it's dependent upon that.
Maybe split costs to make it happen.
But I do know that the decisions on the financial side from the city is coming to the city administrator. The city C V B person does not make any financial decisions.
I understand, right, I understand, I understand.
So, we know how the administrator is.
I did visit with you one time.
But we gotta get past that.
I actually made it more than one time.
You did?
And I told you that I wanted you to work with the city, I wanted you to make peace, I guess, I know there's a lot of bad blood, but I did visit with you in my office, and I told you about that, I told you about the vendors that all needed to be, not, well, it was brought up by a couple vendors, but one in particular that I guess y'all can't stand or whatever, but she needed to be part of it.
I understand that, and actually, I made amends with vendors at the Country Christmas thing. I was the only one that did, and that wasn't even my thing. I didn't set up that event, it wasn't my, not my event at all, but I went up there to try and make amends with the vendors, because it was a Hank F M partnership with the expo, and Hank was livid, and we don't need to lose that relationship with the radio station that we work with that has classic rock and country and old country, you know, I mean, so, I went up there and I made amends with all of those vendors. All of those vendors know, they can give them to another event in Glen Rose if I'm doing it, and get free for the ones that were here at that. And Richard, I have spoken with Rita, and we've actually had conference calls on the things that the magazines that she does versus the magazines I do, so that there's not an overlap on that.
I don't know her, I've met her a couple times, and I asked her if y'all were communicating, and she said that you wouldn't answer your phone.
I can get you with the A J R person to tell you about the three-way.
And it doesn't matter to me what happened in the past, I could care less about what happened over the foot city, that's not where I'm coming from, I'm just saying, you know, we were both successful, and we're both successful, and we need to help one another, period. Whatever happened, happened, it's already water under the bridge.
And that's what I'm trying to do, is move on.
So, are we all good if Kelly brings back exactly what it would take, our sales tax to get her through this one year, and then we review where we're at there, and then get through this budget cycle, and we see what we pick up, what we take off, and what we make and bring in? Does that make sense?
Yeah, or, you know, I can give it to you, you know, talk to find somebody who might produce.
No, that's not what we're asking.
That's what we're asking you to do.
Let's go down this other path first.
Which path?
The path that just tells us, you know, have you reduced expenses, the ones that you need to do, the ones that you want to do, and then what it takes to keep us going.
You know what?
And I know you've had a lot of...
Give us your best advice on which ones you need to take care of, which you need to go to.
Personal, you've had a lot of personal things going on with your family this last year, and I totally understand that, 'cause I was there too.
I've still been working.
And it's kind of funny how some people gloat about how you're doing things, 'cause I don't think she's doing anything wrong.
Hey, Valerie.
Thank you for your time, Kelly.
You take care of Windmore Productions, that check you showed me the other day, you took care of them? Good. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Well, that's the last thing we have scheduled for lunch. If y'all wanna go to lunch, we'll come back at one-thirty, we got Trey and Haley, and whatever y'all want to discuss after that will be up to y'all.
Okay.
Uh, wait a minute, I better get Stephanie.
Turn it off.
I forgot again. Give me just a minute. Got too damn many Kellys and too many Jeffs, too many Jeff Harris, Jeff Hanson, Jeff Haynes.
All Jeffs.
Kelly Steph, Kelly Harris, Kelly Campbell. I think they hired another Kelly somewhere, damn, trying to pick y'all the right one out.
I broke my own pair of glasses.
You're not done burning.
I got a new pair, but I left them at home, so.
I've asked Kelly to come back, so she can turn off her speaker.
Yes, sir.
If she didn't get that within a few seconds, I'll walk down there and get her. Uh, there she is.
Stephanie.
Yeah, she should be on her way right now. Nikki, getting all this put in by next Wednesday, maybe a whole lot to ask, come on. Think you'll be able to give a printout to all of us where we're at next Wednesday? Give us a rough draft to begin with? I hope we're gonna meet with Wes and Bruce Medley, hopefully sometime Monday or Tuesday, till we get everything in line, hopefully for Wednesday. How we doing, Steph?
Good, thank you.
We'll try to do this right this time.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna break for lunch at eleven, eleven A M on tenth day of July, and we'll reconvene at one-thirty P M after we all have lunch. Thank you, Kelly.
While they're walking.
That's what I heard, and I've heard a lot of complaints about them. I didn't know we were getting...
Running well, probably.
I've heard many complaints. You up, running?
Yes, sir.
All right, it is one-thirty-one on July the ninth, Tuesday evening, and we will open this budget workshop back up to the public. Our first one on our list is J P's office, so Scott, come on down if you would like, sit at the front and...
That sounds like the process, right?
Y'all have questions, or do you want me to just talk?
You can just talk if you want, and go over these line items.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michelle. I'll try to remember to text you this time.
When I look at my budget, it scares me to death, because comparing it to twenty-eleven, my budget's doubled, and I just, you know, how did that happen? You all know, in every department, it's done that, so, anyway, what we're asking for is what I had last year, pretty much. I'm asking for about five thousand dollars more, for a total of four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight, twenty-four. What that's going to do for me, there was one, two, three, four, five items that we went over budget for some reason, and I have no idea why, but it's all, it's all under or just above two thousand dollars on four items. News and subscriptions was two-hundred-and-thirty dollars, I think we've, I've asked for five-hundred on that, because it's gone over, and we pulled it out of something, I mean, we pulled it out of there for something else, and I don't know what.
For what now?
We're over a hundred and, so, our budget's two-hundred-and-thirty dollars.
Next Wednesday.
And as of May thirty-first, we spent one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars more on news and subscriptions, and I truthfully don't know where that went. It had to be pulled out to something else.
See, I can't get into it in here, but I can let you see.
Okay, okay. The next thing would be, and I'm going up the list, starting at the bottom, J P Office Supplies, that's line item three-eleven, they, everything has just doubled. I'm adding a thousand dollars for that, because we're nearly five-hundred dollars over budget.
Thank you.
At this point, right.
Just that one up, okay? Then going up to premium pay, for some reason, we're a hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars over that, it's budgeted five-hundred, so we're talking about small money, we're not talking about much, okay? But I've asked up that to a thousand dollars, so I'm up at five-hundred, so I'll have a cushion, okay? And then the biggest, the majority of this is all in salaries. Obviously, Social Security will have to go up about three-hundred dollars from what I'm asking, we're asking for about three-thousand-one-hundred dollars, and that's all in clerk pay. We have a clerk that's completed her second year, we had anticipated all along that we were going to increase her wage as she caught on to the system, and heck, she's leaving the place now. She's done a good job, we wanted, we planned on using the stepping grade back in the day when she got to this point, and of course, that's gone away, so this year we weren't able to increase her pay. This'll get her up where we kind of, kind of wanted her. So, that would, that increased...
Do you know what that breaks out for her right there, Scott?
Sir?
Do you know what that breaks out for her?
Uh...
Do you have it broke down?
Well...
That's all right, you can get it to us later, that's fine.
I don't have it, I don't have it here.
'Cause we got plenty more meetings.
But we had, last year's budget was ninety-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars, and, no, I'm sorry, last year it was ninety-three thousand, eight-hundred dollars, and I'm asking to increase it to ninety-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars.
And most of that's for your one employee? Is that right?
I'm sorry?
Is most of that for your one employee?
That one employee.
Okay.
Most of, yes, yes, it is all.
Okay.
Well, hopefully, depending on where we're at, we might get a raise, if we can, for everybody.
Okay.
Cost of living, again, if, you know, if the numbers work out.
Right.
Yeah, the goal, my personal...
Not including the cost of living, if that happens, that's great, but this is where we wanted to have her January first, this past year, this is where we wanted it.
Based on experience, based on duties and responsibilities and things like that.
With us transitioning into...
So, you're wanting to do a salary adjustment for her, aside from whatever increase we may try to do.
Right. I mean, if it wasn't for that, I'd be asking for two thousand dollars, more than last year.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, okay.
Anybody have any...
Like Wade was saying, her goal is to do it across the board, increase, that's always my goal, just to try to do a five percent across the board, don't know if it's gonna happen at this point.
That'd be awesome if that happened, but even if it doesn't happen...
But you're looking at that separate from a five percent, 'cause you're talking about adjusting her...
Right.
...level or whatnot, okay. So, your professional services, there's plenty of money in there as well?
Professional services, so, I mean, that can change in a heartbeat, but right now, we're looking pretty good. Now, I haven't, I didn't look at end of June, but end of May, we're still in good shape. We've had a couple of deaths, but...
That's when you were autopsies.
Autopsy, yeah.
Okay.
When y'all transferred, y'all done really well, when you transferred over to North Texas there.
Yeah.
I spoke to y'all really good. I know some complaints, I'd like to go back to them.
Well, you know, it's a big company, I mean, they're statewide, they don't seem to have done as good a job as Tarrant County used to do, but then you know what happened in Tarrant County?
They got in a lot of trouble, yeah.
They all got themselves in trouble.
They did.
And, of course, their rates kept going up and up and up, and anyway, but their service, I mean, we never had any complaints with that, but Wileys, they would sure like for y'all to go back to Tarrant County, 'cause it's such a shorter distance to go for them, cost more for them, which they have to, you know, tack on for us, but they, Dr. G and Meske has done a great job for us, so, we're happy with it.
Okay, anything else at all, Scott?
That's all I have, unless you have any specific questions.
Besides the toilet paper, everything good?
Toilet paper dispenser, y'all just, that's Ronnie's complaint.
I know.
And you notice I didn't bring him?
I heard, I did, I heard.
Letting know we'll specialize for that.
Letting know how concerned we all are about.
He wouldn't have been able to hear you anyway.
What?
Do what?
We've got a good team, guys, and we appreciate all y'all.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Have any questions at any time.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Do appreciate it.
Jeff, see ya.
Should be the library.
Hey.
Hey.
She only changed one thing, that's like twenty thousand.
And I talked to Jordan with the Agri Lab, come on in, Peggy, you can sit down up here if you'd like, because at first, Jordan and them weren't available today or tomorrow, then they were available today, and now they're not available, so I told her what we'd do is we'd go over it, we'd give it to Nikki to put in, if they have any disputes, then we'll fight it out, because we have other talks. How you doing, Peggy?
I'm doing good, how are y'all?
And Peggy, everybody's got a copy, including Nikki, of what you turned in to me, so everybody knows, everybody's on the same page.
All right.
I only see one change, and that's in that twenty thousand, which I think falls under utilities.
Library utilities, yeah, and then, of course, the wages and everything up top.
Right.
Peggy, like we told everybody else, depending on what we're able to give across the board, you know, three, five, anything, whatever, we'll try, hopefully, to give everybody the same.
Okay.
Part-time's the same, let's see, all the others out of our hands as far as medical, until we get the numbers, retirement, workers' comp, okay, so posties at a hundred, office supplies, four-twenty-five, computer supplies, six-fifty, books and videos, sixteen thousand... Books and video, sixteen thousand. Operating supplies, fifteen hundred. Replacement parts and supplies, a thousand. Janitorial supplies, three twenty-five. Deues and subscriptions, seven hundred and fifty. Seminar expense, fifty. It looks like that hasn't changed in a while. Is that, is that what you want to leave it at, Peggy?
Yeah, it's, it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
The medical, that's the physical, one fifty. The insurance is out of your, my hands. Telephone, twenty-five hundred. Advertising, fifty. Utilities, of course, that went up just across the board. We'll see how that works out.
Yeah.
Twenty thousand. Vendor building grounds, twelve hundred. Copier, that is weird that yours is so much lower than everybody else's in the county.
Yeah, I don't know why it's like that. I don't know why, why it's ten dollars.
Because you know, we have it leased with Curbo and we lease across the county with them throughout the entire.
Right.
I use it quite a bit.
Uh-huh. We do, yeah.
Do, is that the, the copier that folks would come in off the street and use? Do they pay for copies?
Yes.
That may be why that offsets.
I wonder if that's been in rental equipment instead of.
It might.
It looks more like it.
Do you rent anything?
That would be the only thing.
That, yeah.
So I bet that's, yeah.
I bet that's it. And it's probably, I don't know, left with the ten, just to keep the line item open. I don't know. But, yeah.
Yeah.
I bet that's part of it that folks come in and pay.
A placeholder. Because rental sounds a lot closer to what Curbo would do.
Right, right.
And then computer maintenance, two thousand. How's that working out for us? I know we were trying to get all your computers up and then we didn't have any of them. We had a server go down on us, we was going to replace the server. How's all that working?
Well, they took all the computers and they redid all of them. They brought them back, but they still have some things to do to them, so we're still waiting.
Did we get the server replaced where you're back online as far as?
It's all going to be in the cloud, is what they told us.
So there's not going to be any remote server there for you for now? Okay. Well, in the long run, if we ever get you going, that's probably cheaper for the county if and when that all happens.
Right.
Okay. Because I know you have a lot of people who use those computers.
We do. We've had, we've had lots of people come in and ask us, well, when are they going to be fixed? And I said, well, I'm not sure, but.
They give you a timeline?
They didn't. He just, he brought them back and he said, we still have a couple of updates that we have to do. But he didn't really say when. He, well, actually, at the time, he said he'd probably have it done by the end of the day, but.
Whatever day that was.
That was a few days ago.
Okay. But we'll do some research for you.
Okay.
All right.
That'd be great.
And then on your pest control, that stays the same. Rental we just discussed. And equipment furniture, you've only got it a hundred. Does that all look good for you, Peggy, you think?
It does, I think.
We got the fire alarm system all set up and going. It's all good to go.
Yeah.
That's good. Updated new panel, all that, so that's good.
Yes.
You got the accreditation I heard too, didn't you?
We did.
Very good. Is it working good?
Uh-huh. I think Eric said that was the last one that hadn't been replaced.
It is.
So now they've all been replaced.
We're getting there slowly across the whole county. Yeah, that's coming up. He's going to try to get those bids to us hopefully by Monday. If not, we'll have another meeting to discuss that. Peggy, anything else at all?
No, I don't know of anything, Dan.
All right.
Just went and get our computers.
We'll check on that.
Pretty good show.
In fact, we'll check on it right now.
How long you been the librarian for the county?
I've been the librarian since two thousand. But I've actually worked at the library since nineteen seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's where I started.
Uh-huh. When they moved from that little nook there by the museum over to the old night building. That's when I started.
Amy's been there for a while too, huh?
She's been there since about two thousand. Yeah, she's, no, no, I'm wrong. Since about nineteen ninety-five. I think she started, we moved up into the new library in January of ninety-five. And I think she started right before we moved there, so, yeah.
I bet that was a chore to move that library up there.
Oh, yeah. It was. But it was more of a chore when we had to get new carpet put down.
Yeah.
And moving the heritage center in on you.
Yeah.
Everything got being ordered.
Yeah, well, I know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, packing up all those, boxing up all those books and then having to put them back.
Putting them back where they go.
That would be, yeah, that was a major.
We got a container, we set it out in the parking lot, took them all in the container, did four, put them all back up.
Yeah. Put them all in the right order regardless.
I don't know about that.
Theoretically.
Somewhere close to the right order, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Will you check y'all your computers when you get back? They're supposed to be up and going.
They're supposed to be up in.
Supposed to be, he said.
Okay.
We brought them up. I thought we told them they should be back on now. So if you don't mind, yeah. If you don't mind, just check them. And if they're not, let us know and we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right.
We'll do that. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank y'all. I'll be with them.
Does Amy have a score?
Okay, I'll do that.
She's like seventy-seven or seventy-eight, yeah. Yep. Yeah, pretty close. Okay, we'll talk with adult probation next morning, next Wednesday morning at ten a.m. before we get into, as we go through the line, the line, the line. Because we'll probably be back at nine-thirty. Have adult probation at ten. And then we'll start in the nitty-gritty. Tomorrow, we've got Eric Wood, Brian Jones, Kelly Harris. Tomorrow evening, we've got Trey and Heidi together. And then we may see if we work Expo in in the morning or in the evening. And then tomorrow evening, we'll try to leave open whatever y'all want to do above and beyond. Other issues.
Yeah, once all these numbers are registered, we'll see where we're at.
Yeah. That's always the initial shakeout.
That's the key.
The first meeting is always the most shocking. Once we get through the seventeenth and twenty-fourth, it'll be a little easier to absorb them. I guess what we're going to have to discuss, and the rest of the county is going to have to understand this, depending on what y'all decide to do, under three percent or five percent, if any percent. You know, you've got your money coming from the state, from the Sheriff's Department and the Attorney's Department. It's really up to y'all how you want to allocate it and use it. We just need to be careful for future courts. Who knows what's going to happen?
And they, of course, they can't guarantee it by any means. But in the conference we were attending last week, week four, whenever it was, they, they all but said it's there. They cannot say it's there. I realize that.
So if y'all both use the salaries, you feel comfortable for twenty-five, twenty-six?
But.
You don't feel comfortable for twenty-five, twenty-six?
I mean, how do you feel comfortable? I mean, he offered, but that's also what they told us. If it goes to those departments, it's pretty much their say what money's spent on.
Right.
But he offered, but.
And they, they said, you know, a lot of counties are using it. Now, they don't recommend using ARPA funds or any of that for salaries.
Right, that we know who's going to.
Because that's not, you know, that's not continuing, yes.
Yeah, but how long? There's no way of telling how long it's going to continue.
No. And what's what they were saying, that if it ever were to go away, counties are going to have to readjust for it.
Yeah.
And.
And can you sustain the raises you get?
Well, I mean, that's.
Somebody might lose their job or something.
That's where, that's where you adjust or you.
Right.
You do.
The self-sex is all there is that we can rely on.
That's, that's almost the most reliable, yes.
Or not hire a bank. We're always short on one.
Do attrition?
But like I said, the grant's solid. It's solid going into the future. But we can't tell what the legislature's going to do in five, six, eight years, just like we can't tell what a court's going to do in five, six, eight years.
Boy, they have thirty, thirty billion in revenue, extra revenue this year, they're seventy-twenty, so.
Right. But it's, it's solid right now. It's very solidified right now.
And once they meet in twenty-five, say you get through twenty-five, twenty-six, then they meet again in twenty-seven. Whatever they do next year, you'll know you have in twenty-six.
Mm-hmm.
Because they can't screw you up until they meet again.
Mm-hmm.
So they'll just be.
But like Alan said, when they meet, it's like, this is already here, don't mess with it kind of thing. And they don't till they do. I mean, I'm not, I'm not that naive. I'm naive, but I'm not that bad.
Because it went from eight percent to three and a half percent.
Exactly.
And next year, they're talking about two and a half percent.
Yeah. And that one guy wants to go zero as he can on the world, but.
It's going to be hard to provide services at the current rate.
I'd say that, man.
Well, not the services we currently provide.
No.
We can provide a much less service.
Much less.
Right.
If it were to do that.
Sorry, Christie, how you doing?
Good.
And everybody's got a copy of what you turned in to me, including Nikki. And I know this group's getting tired of hearing me say it. Salaries, who knows what'll be done? You know how that goes? If the court's able to do the three percent, five percent, depends on whatever. Works with the money, it works with the benefit package and the insurances and so on and so forth. So, that being said, do you, it looks like you want to reduce your part-time to ten thousand? Is that right?
Only because it's a smaller election year.
Okay.
For this year, we would only be having a November election within this budget cycle.
Okay.
Unless the governor surprises us, as he has been known to surprise us in the past.
He did a special only one other year.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, yeah, some of it decreased, some of it kind of stayed around the same. Like, our election judges kind of stayed around the same. And that is only because for November, we're going to be required to do twelve hours for two weeks. And that's going to include weekends as well. So that's going to kind of increase that cost as well as our premium pay with us working all that additional overtime.
So you feel good with part-time at ten, election judges seven thousand, the premium pay twelve thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Feel good to get you through November?
Mm-hmm. And then longevity for both mine and Evelyn's is going to be around twelve hundred, I do believe. I think the mine's going to be like around four hundred and hers is the rest of that, something similar to that. I don't remember the exact breakdown of those. The Social Security, Medicare, retirement, workers' comp, all that, I don't know.
All Nikki's and Valerie's hands, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know any about that. But for postage, that's, I'm going to decrease just a little bit. We'll have a lot of ballot by mails to be sent out as well as our, is this year for the Mass Millout? No, that's going to be next year. Mass Millout will be, that should be next year's budget. Office supplies, I had originally put down nine hundred for office supplies, but I have requested an increase to fourteen because both Evelyn and I really need new.
Chairs.
Office chairs. Mine squeaks all the time. And we've done everything to try to fix that WD-40, all that kind of stuff. The leather part of it's starting to peel. They're just in pretty rough shape. We've had them for quite a bit of time.
Do you want us to like leave the office supplies at nine hundred and then go down to your five-seventy? And put like nine hundred in your five-seventy? And then that way, you'd have your equipment come out of there, like your chairs and desks? That's normally where we try to take the, and I know the five-seventy's cut off on this one. I don't know if you have.
Yeah, I was looking, because I thought I had one that had equipment on, or like furniture on it. And I was looking for it and I didn't, I didn't see it in here. So that's why I just put it under office supplies, but.
If you're good with the five-seventy, that's usually where we put the equipment and furniture. If you don't mind, we would go down there. What would you think, five hundred's going to cover the two chairs?
It should be. The ones we were looking at was like four, like four seventy-five or something like that. So five hundred should cover.
You give that, Nikki, because I know it's not on our sheet.
Yeah, we just bought a couple for the Attorney's Office and they were like four or something.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. So move ahead there. Admin computers.
I think that's just, nothing really comes out of that. But I think they're just usually like to leave some money in there just for like a placeholder, just in case something does come up.
Yes.
That we need. So I just, I just left it at the five hundred. Like, it's, it's like twenty-two and twenty-three, there's been nothing in there. But in the past, it's been pretty much around five hundred. Election supplies, I have listed as thirty-five because for one thing, this November election's going to be really busy. It's a presidential election, and so we're anticipating a huge voter turnout, which is going to require more ballots, more programming, more printing. Our, a lot of our annual subscriptions and software agreements come out of this as well. Our ESNS software agreement is five thousand for the year. And then we have our No Ink, which is our pole pads. That's like another twenty-five hundred. And then our Vista, which is our scanning software, that's around twenty-five hundred. So all of that comes out of that as well.
Elections are not cheap.
Mm-mm, no, they are not. And voter registration, that's a thousand. Those are for like our voter cards, our applications that we use, people use to register to vote. And then the cards that we print off and send out. Do's and subscriptions, I don't have anything under that. Seminar expenses is at three thousand five hundred because we usually try to do two seminars a year. We do the Secretary of State Election Law Seminar in August. And then we try to go do the TAEA seminar that's in January. So those are two expenses there. My bond just, was just paid, so I didn't have it, put anything in there. Ads and notices, we'll have Granberry ISD, that'll need to have their notice published. Our Notice of Election and Order of Election will need to be published. Our Notice of Testing will need to be published, so that usually runs us around six hundred. Our Notice of Testing will need to be published, so that usually runs us around six hundred. Printing, that is just for our printer, the fees that charges for like our color copies. If we go over any of the other additional copies, that's just kind of like a placeholder in there. Equipment rental, I think that is, that's our copier, right, the equipment rental? I think that's, I think that is our copier. And then I have that at a thousand. And then our election security, I have at seven hundred. That is for our security officer that comes in and watches the ballot board for election day for us. But as far as, I know you had mentioned, as far as like salaries go, that you are going to make a determination on that. But on here, I have requested an additional four thousand five hundred. That is because in the past, when, I know we've gotten away from the salary surveys and like the step grades that we used to have, when I first started working here, there was a lot of revision done to that. And some of those step grades, I didn't, I prematurely missed out on a few of them just because they were being revised and I kind of got, not really bumped down, but kind of stayed at the same rate a couple of times when those were being revised and so... And then also, there's additional workload on top of what we have been doing with all the notices and stuff that are now required to be posted, that didn't have to be posted in the past. Changes that the Secretary of State has made us do, the additional workload that they have made us do that we have normally not done in the past, that we're now required to do. And just things like that have increased in our workload. And I would like to request a decent pay raise.
For you?
Yes.
Because I know Evelyn also gets from the maintenance end of it.
Yeah, and we have talked about that, requesting a three thousand dollars raise for her under just elections, because I know she had gotten one, I think it was a couple of years ago, under maintenance.
Yeah, I think it was like five or seventy-five hundred, I believe it was.
Yeah, so, but I'll leave that up to you guys to make the determination on those and... But, yeah, because like the additional forty-five would put me at fifty-seven and her at forty-six with the additional thirty for the year, or for the next budget year.
And what did we do? I know we did the maintenance ordeal at seventy-five hundred. Did we do anything for the commissioners as far as secretary end of it? Or we stood at all in the maintenance end of it, right?
Maintenance end of, plus the, well, the five percent, we gave everybody.
Right, right, yeah, above and beyond that, yeah.
No, we didn't do anything.
For the tickets and scheduling and maintenance, okay.
Perfect.
Yeah, I know it hadn't been that long ago that she had gotten one under, under maintenance, but it had also been a while for her
Yeah.
that she had gotten one under elections. Besides the annual step raise.
Hopefully it'll be annual.
Yeah, who knows, huh? Okay, anything else at all, Kristy?
I don't think so.
Nikki on her sheet there, five seventies cut off. I had it on the front sheet, did you see?
Yes, I've got it. I put it in here.
Perfect.
Yeah, because I was just looking at the, I was looking for it, because that's where I was going to put it, buy it and skip, so.
You could go ahead with the chairs.
Yeah, we could knock them out this year.
Yeah, real quick.
Yeah.
Be done with, go ahead and get it.
Get them on this year's budget and sit next year's, because I know April's going to bring some desk requests, she's getting bid on the desk. And for annex improvements, you know, we've got capital improvements in annex dollars that we still have that we could expend before September thirtieth and keep us from trying to expend it next year.
Okay.
If you don't mind, go ahead and get the prices and give it Nikki and Valerie and see your Joanna on the two chairs, see what it costs. And then we'll bring it back to the court and approve it out of five, out of the capital improvements. And then we go and get that done and get April's done too.
Okay. All right, Nikki.
And if we get that done, then we can take that five hundred back out of five seventy.
So as far as like our salaries, do I, how, do I just leave it blank on that, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, and hopefully Haley will be putting together a whole sheet together for us that goes through every person of benefits, the longevity, the retirement, the raise if any. And then you'll get to see that before we get to the August fifteenth date. Before we file it for a public inspection. Because we're going to be meeting on the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth, and the thirty-first. We'll probably meet again on the ninth before we file it on the fifteenth, I would imagine, because...
What's the newspaper date?
The seventh, yeah. The seventh is when we'll have to discuss. Because if you give elected officials any, we got to set salaries, expenses, allowances, and get that out and distribute it. And then we have to talk about when we're going to advertise it. Then on the twelfth in court, y'all need to set when we're going to do the proposed salaries in public hearings and make sure we get that in the newspaper. Not less than ten days, not greater than thirty days, which by September ninth, that'll work. And I know as I...
Well, it's the newspaper here. Takes care of business.
I know.
They're getting where they're pretty good now. They're, when you have to have it in by and all that's different now since they print it on Saturday. You have to have about, really about two weeks' notice to get it on the day that you really want.
So if they discuss it on the twelfth, which is I believe a Monday, then follow the proposal with Michelle on the fifteenth, that would put it in the paper on the twenty-ninth if they're two weeks out. So we might have to give that notice to them a little bit sooner if they're actually two weeks out. Because we can't be less than ten, but no greater than thirty.
They call and hold it spot for us.
No kidding, yeah.
Well, it got to be.
Tell them it's coming.
Something's going to come no matter what it is.
They can't miss it, yeah, because they have missed it before. And when that, when we...
And it seems like that's a problem all over the state because they didn't discuss it.
That was a big discussion at that conference when we were out.
You're going to lay with local advertising? That'd be great.
No, they haven't done away with it. They're talking about it.
But they're trying to figure it out because some of the local newspapers are going by the wayside. And they even go as far as to say if you don't have a local newspaper, you have to find one.
General circulation.
That is in your area, if people subscribe to it, then you've got to go with it.
That would be River Johnson, I guess.
I mean, probably for September.
Well, I'd be to start telling them if ours were to go completely away.
Be nice if they ever just go online, where we could advertise online.
They suggest that.
County news?
Yeah, but how many people here subscribe to it? That's what you have to look at.
They did suggest something about going to online.
More than Fort Worth. That'd be fine. Do it online, we could advertise what we needed. Because that's what gets us, is the advertising dates.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah.
Used to, we'd call them on Tuesday and we'd have it in by Thursday. And then last year, if we called them by Tuesday or Wednesday, we didn't get in until the next Wednesday or Thursday. And now you're telling me it may be two weeks.
Well, like I said, we have to hit the right deadline, so I'll double check and be for sure.
If you don't mind, especially in August, because that's when it gets real serious in August. When we file Michelle on the fifteenth and then... Sorry, Kristy, you just got involved in conversation you don't care about.
That's all right.
Big call.
What is it?
Newspaper deadlines are, I don't look back to you and I don't want to change it.
Like what you did that time, we brought a lawsuit and we missed the one deadline. We didn't get the ten day, yeah, we had like, I think it was nine days and we didn't get the ten. Because you can't do it less than ten, but you can't do it greater than thirty. So you have that twenty-day window there you have to hit. And if they got two weeks out, that's fourteen days, it can screw us up right there. But we'll do what we got to do.
We'll get it there.
We'll get it there. We'll just keep fighting, fighting till we get it there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
I think I'm done.
You're done.
Thank you.
If you want, until Valerie gets here, the hand moves out, this is the extension office. And they didn't have a whole lot to change. Like I said, they couldn't be here, then they could be here, now they can't be here. So they will, one of our later meetings will go over if they have something that they don't like. On the front page, you notice she just put tables for a conference, side folds, side folders. She didn't put any money there. But then on the second page, and this is what I was talking to her about earlier, where it says furniture with question mark. It's got like a thousand dollars add line out and back to our budget. And she put five seventy down here is what she's talking about, because it got cut off at the second.
Cut off office number, yeah.
So she would like a thousand dollars and five seventy for the equipment and furniture. And then under office supplies, she's got two thousand dollars. And then under computer supplies, she's got fifteen hundred dollars. And that's the only changes that she has that I see, unless y'all see something different. Two thousand on six, six, five, three, eleven, fifteen hundred on six, six, five, three, twelve, and a thousand on five seventy. Does that make sense to you, Nikki?
This is side tables.
Yeah, I don't really know tables for a conference, side tables.
侧面 tables.
And I'm hoping that this thousand that she added for furniture was covering what she wrote on this front page.
Okay.
I would assume so. She said they got called out at some event today that they had to go help with our hosts.
They got those, those picnic tables out on the right-hand side of that building along the left to be driving out. Got those.
From where you hear the trees cut out?
Yeah.
Is that, oh, I bet that's what you know, a side table, okay, that's what she's talking about. Sometimes kids in the trucks are probably cheap. Do I? What's wrong there, Michelle? Afraid I'm going to walk out and forget again like I did at lunchtime? I fl- I remembered you sitting at the red light at Herbert Street, I remembered you.
She looks tired.
And I thought Haley gave me hers, but I'll have to get with Haley and see if she do.
So, Richard, you think those are picnic tables, those side tables?
I always think so. I don't get all of any other tables that are out there. So I'll make copies for y'all tomorrow. They're going to be at one thirty tomorrow even. Who else? There you go.
Thank you.
How bad does it look, Nikki?
Well, really, the only thing asked for was to add another employee, went down on some few things.
And I think you met with district judges also, didn't you? Not getting in your business, but I think you met with...
So you're going to be down street short, right?
Yes.
To discuss...
Yes, I did talk to the district judges.
Hmm?
Too short.
One down and then she had one.
So everything else, like I said, I think we go down on the audit expense. We're not getting caught up on that.
Only took us four years.
Only took us four years.
Five years.
Yeah.
Five, yeah, five, six years.
Five years.
Working on it ever since I came to office.
Yes.
Didn't you make me nervous? It's like mosquitoes on the office.
I killed you.
I'll see if there's another one. They come in pairs.
So basically, the only expense we're adding to yours is the other position. Which the auditor recommended, and then you talk to district judges and they agree with you. Valerie, you go ahead and sit up here, you're next, you're in the, you're in the hot box next. So as you've heard everybody else say, put the worst-case scenario in there and then we go from there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nikki. All right, Valerie, everybody's got a copy of what you gave me, including Nikki.
Okay, I want to change that.
You want to do what?
Change something.
Oh, yeah? Well, if you want to start at the top on the sheet that you got. Well, whichever way, because when I made copies, it didn't really turn out all that good.
Didn't turn out very well.
Yeah, it didn't turn out all that dark. So I'll just let you talk and go from there.
So you know how when they treasured before, she had two and a half people? And it's just been me this last year and a half, two years. So, and I've been talking to other people and they say they get a stop-in for doing extra work. So I want to add that to my thing. And I want to add just one person, a chief deputy, because there's got to be somebody who can do my job. There's got to be somebody. And I want to know if I can use the payroll budget now and try and hire somebody now to get them trained. Because I have conferences coming up in September and it's on payroll week and I don't know how I'm going to do all that.
And payroll's got to be done.
It's got to be done. And it's going to take me a while to find somebody, because I have no clue. I mean, I want to put it out there and let people come, put in their applications, whatever, so I can interview people. Because it's got to be somebody I trust, somebody who knows what, you know, kind of what they're doing so they can learn it. Yeah.
So you're thinking you'd like to have a chief deputy and somebody?
No, no.
Just chief deputy, period?
Just chief deputy, but then I want the stop-in since I'll be doing all the other stuff. That the other person and a half that Suzie used to have did.
What is the stop-in?
Because I'm here every day. Stop-in, I put two thousand dollars. I'm here every day. I don't leave at five. And I'm here on the weekends, here on some holidays. I mean, I'm here all the time. I'm, I just, uh... Think that since I'm doing the job of leading this one person, I should get supplemented. Because she used to have two and a half people doing her job and now it's just me.
Didn't they used to have HR in there also?
Yeah, HR, payroll.
HR, payroll, treasurer.
Everything was in there at one time.
But now I have payroll, but the payroll that I have consists of all the insurance and everything, they said and go with HR.
Didn't it always?
No, it should go with HR, but it didn't. That's not how it was set up here. So that's me now too.
Insurance has always been with payroll. Insurance and benefits were always with payroll. They were never with HR.
Aren't here, they haven't been.
Yeah, yeah, they haven't.
Everywhere else, though, that's how it's set up.
Well, y'all give your thoughts. We've been telling everybody else we can put the worst-case scenario in, that we got to take it out, we take it out, you know?
So also, I was going to see if I could have, because used to, you know, that one, that one, the payroll office used to be like a communal office, because Phyllis from Treasurer was in there and then the coffee machine was in there and everything. So it was kind of close to everybody, since everybody pays for it. Can we put the copier machine somewhere else or get me one?
Did you have a copier?
Because used to, it was, I can't, no, I can't copy, it's just a printer. I can't, I'm used to Casey was there and I could walk back and forth to her closet, so it's her office, so it's no big deal. But we don't do that anymore. So I'm just too busy to sit there and walk around the whole time, every time. And if I'm going to, if the treasurer's going to pay for part of that, then it should be in a communal spot.
So either move it or get another one, is that what you're thinking? I guess that's up to y'all. If y'all want to move it, if not, we can discuss with Turbo getting another one. Because I don't know what it costs to add another one to it. Eddie could talk to him pretty easily. Where would you put it in that office next year's? Because I know your hallway's pretty full.
Yeah, because of the postage machine, yeah, that would be common.
Which is y'all's business, that's not my business, it's just I know it's getting crowded over there.
Oh.
So, and if you add a person and then hire somebody for Casey, then you're full. And if she gets a chief deputy in that office where Leslie used to be, it'll be full again. Is there room in there for a copy?
Well, yeah, because they took that other desk out. They took that out, so there's lots there.
All right.
Just, I just, it didn't have to be a huge big one, just something like, and get up and make copies.
How does the other counties do the stop-in you're talking about? Is that just what they call it? They just pay in addition to the salary and benefits? It's like a separate line out?
Because I don't really want to hire a whole another person. I don't think we need a whole another person.
Besides the chief deputy?
Right, yeah, I want the chief de- I got to have somebody there, I got to have them.
I agree with what you're saying. I mean, you're doing the work, you must will get paid for it. But I'll, my thought behind the...
Well, I know other people get stop-ins for it in other people's.
Is that more than one person, more than one person other than you needs to learn how to do that.
Oh, yeah, and I've still got to get trained on that. I mean, I haven't even had time to do that yet. I'm not going to have time to get trained on anything until like totally trained, like I need to be for all the insurances and time clock till I get somebody. Because it's just constant all the time. I mean, they're doing the bank stuff or I'm doing payroll. I mean, it's just, it's constant. I don't have a second to train me down anything. It's calling people, hey, I need to do this, will you help me through this? Let me get, you know, I mean, technically I'm learning that way, but I would like to get trained correctly.
What kind of salary was you thinking about on your chief deputy? Gets on there, you just can't hardly see it.
And then I add, I put the, so I have that, and then I had, I don't, the postage, I don't know about that because I know usually when I do the postage, I do use mine, but I know Nikki always has a postage thing too. She said if mine runs out, I can use her because it's milling all our bills. And then a postage is going up this month, but I don't think we need to know that, huh? Because do we even use yours hardly at all?
Some, no, it's just a whole.
But that's twenty-eight hundred between both of us. But that's plenty in there between both of us. That's plenty, you know? And then the seminar expense, the chief deputy will have to go to the seminars and will learn her stuff. She'll have to go to as many as I do, but she'll have to go and she'll have to be bonded. So I put the seminar expense, I added that up and then I added to the treasurer bonds. So I'm not sure how much the, her bond would be.
So you're thinking 8,000 in seminars for you and if you get the chief deputies, what you're thinking?
Yeah, she'll have to go. Cause she'll have to do the investment and then she'll have to go to at least one of the treasurer.
Investment, we're not investing any money, are we?
Well, that's, that's what we, I have to do the investment.
Right, I know you have to do it, but we're not, but we're not investing anything.
Well, that's our, that covers all of our, like, you know, our, um, tax rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're not doing, cause we don't have a policy for it.
Yeah, we have a policy for it.
But I have to go to that for my treasurer's hours.
Looks like it. Yeah, I think she wants to go from five to eight.
And I do have an Excel sheet set up for payroll. If y'all wanna know like the totals of what everything will be. About 1%, 3%, 5%, we just change it and it'll just.
Yeah, we will need to know like if they decide they wanna try to give like a hundred dollars or some bonds. I don't know for sure. I think it's seven.
It's 500. It's, it's 500 right now.
Does she drive 2,000?
Yeah. Cause I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure if I would need, I, cause I don't know how much her bond would be.
So 500?
She's got a hundred on the side.
Thousand.
A thousand.
Thousand, cause I'm not sure. I don't know how much her bond would be.
So you wanna put 500 for now?
Weekend that and then.
That's the same. That's what it is for 24, it was 500.
And I don't think, I don't think my bond was 500.
No, I don't think.
They're not that high.
I told Kim to come on in. I told Kim to come on in just a minute. So it's no big deal? Just don't want you prick out.
Who's this bill about?
I don't know. We'd have to ask Valerie. I think she needs some, uh, training on the time clock. I think that's what that is.
Oh.
12 month, 1475, is that right?
That was the, well, yes.
And that would start October 1st? If we run along with this or you wanted to get it before then or?
I, I, I can't, I don't, I don't know yet. I have to wait to see when I get the person, so I don't have the time to do it yet.
So this is a training course for Tyler? Is this?
No, it's time clock.
We're not gonna use time clock, Tyler?
No. That was the worst. They aren't prepared for that. This will talk to it.
This will?
It will.
So you don't have to?
We have to, we will have to.
You don't have?
Change the numbers.
Change all the employee numbers if we wanted to talk.
Yes.
But we don't have to hand transfer stuff?
Once we get it set up, you wouldn't have to.
Well, that should help a lot, shouldn't it? From what we've ever done before?
With the ink after.
After.
After we do that, everything changed over, yeah.
So we're not using this now or we are using this now?
Time clock, please?
That, that's time clock. That is what we're doing now. That's the time clock. That's what they just upgraded it.
That's what was cut off last week that we got turned back on. Went Monday, we got turned back on yesterday.
No, I wasn't worried. We bought another one. Had, missed it somewheres.
It's actually. We didn't buy another one. We just upgraded with them.
It's, you know, the same one like you used.
Only after ever?
Yeah.
Yes.
It just updated the version of it and a few more, uh, I guess bells and whistles instead of.
Yeah, these are the ones that charge us 500 dollars to get our own password back. Yes.
Sorry, Michelle, I didn't mean for you to go and run down there and take care of it. I just told her not to worry about it. Come on in.
But it works. That's great.
Thank you, ma'am.
There's a lot you can do in it, that's for sure.
Tyler was not, their time clock is not ready.
We tried to use their, uh...
I know the first trial was.
Tyler's time clock?
Tyler, yeah. We tried to use their equipment. We tried to use their software.
And we're not the only family that tried that too. They don't have all the bugs worked out of it. It was terrible.
Yeah, we did a trial and they went ahead and, they went ahead and applied it.
Changed a bunch of stuff.
So this, this time clock plus Valerie, that's, that's what you're wanting to send someone you hired to? Or is that what you?
I think it's gonna be.
Is it an ongoing kinda deal?
No, that's for me to get trying to.
Okay, that's for you to get trying. Okay, I'm just clarifying. Is that now?
Cause I think I actually don't have to do it all before I'm trying to teach somebody else.
Well, absolutely. So that's now?
Yes, whenever I can.
We need, well, but you're saying we need to look at approving this?
Yes.
Now, so that you can sign up for it and get to it, okay.
And we need to discuss.
It's not gonna go in, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
It's not gonna go into next years.
I mean, I, I hope I can get to as soon as possible before October.
But we could, okay, I'm with you.
Right.
I'm with you.
I can't really give you a time.
No, I'm with you. I understand. I'm with you.
What we need to discuss and then decide if we take it to the court to vote on it is what she's talking about, the payroll money. That she wants to try to hire somebody like right now. Because that's gonna have to come before y'all to vote on that, before you can move that money around to use that.
Right.
So, I don't know what's left in there. I know a big portion was used up through April. You may, you may know what's left in there. To get through to September 1st and then it would pick up new.
But I think it's plenty enough that I would hire somebody to start. I mean, so I won't, I mean, it's gonna take me how long to find somebody?
And by the time you get that done, you're into August. You only have two months you have to worry about.
Yeah.
Well, if y'all can come up with a number that we could take, if you can come up with a number by Monday, or actually by Thursday. Then the court can discuss that and take action on it at the special session Monday.
Okay.
And I think you said something about the other day that you didn't know we was gonna put it out early and we missed something or you missed something you wanted to put on the agenda?
Oh, just, um, I had a, that contract with Mark. Because he's coming one or two days, yeah.
And I guess you might as well discuss, how are you planning for him?
Yeah, that's out of my part time.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I.
Cause you had, what, 1,500 left or he spent 6,000 for June, right?
No, he didn't even come that much. He, he sent a whole different invoice and there was only like two, he only 2,300 or something. He.
Yeah, I think it was 2,400.
So he didn't charge the full 6,000?
No, no.
So you got lucky there.
Cause he's not coming like he was at, before.
But you're still using it. Are you, are you gonna phase him out if you get this chief deputy? What's, cause I know you're gonna get overloaded with expenses.
There's only like, he's just, cause it's coming up the end of the fiscal year and I just wanna make sure that I'm getting it all right. That's pretty much, and then I'll just, I just call him and ask the questions sometimes.
Is the payroll and retirement and everything starting to smooth out, line out?
Yep, it's starting to. I, I am signed up now for everything, so I can get in everything and do it now.
Well, I guess as we get into the 17th and 24th, 31st, we'll discuss. Y'all say what you wanna do. You wanna put the worst case scenario in there and if you back something out, you back it out? Is that what you're thinking?
That's why you always done it. That's where you start.
Yeah, they're gonna.
Start.
Add a line item for the stop-in, cause that don't exist. And then word it however you word it.
I need to come up with that amount before Thursday, so it could be on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Or email Kelly or myself and tell her how you want it worded on the agenda. Cause I knew there was something that you said that we missed this last time, so, yeah.
So the thing, so that little contract and then the, um, for the chief deputy?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So I guess y'all need to think about between now and then on the chief deputy over there. Because as that works out, that once you approve the money and hire somebody, then you're pretty much guaranteed you're gonna approve it for next year's budget.
Right.
So, once y'all go down that path and there's no returning on that one. With stop-in, you can go and come whenever you so desire, but... Okay, anything else?
But that salary right there, is that gonna be increased by the percentage that we're gonna give everybody else?
It's a good question. I think what he's asking is if you do a 49.5 for your new employee you want. And then if we give everybody else 3% or 5%, or you want that new person to get that 3% or 5% too? While they start out at the 49.5.
Everybody else, I don't, whatever everybody else has been.
I don't think last year we did that. I think you had to be here.
Have to be here.
A full six months before.
Before, okay.
Good question. Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
I think that's what we did last year.
Cause it came up last year with some real recent hours.
Since they haven't been here, whoever hasn't been here, they're not gonna get it, okay.
Correct.
And they've run that through until the next season and then October 1st, the next year, they get whatever everybody else gets.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If anybody knows anybody, relax, it's in on my way. I'm ready to talk to anybody.
It's hard to find good help.
Cause it's, that's what I'm worried about, yeah.
I would think somebody would at least have to have an associate's degree, so you know you're getting somebody.
You know, or if they've had experience, cause that experience is really, really great too, yeah, I mean.
They do.
I just.
You might wanna look up, what Tammy just said, you might wanna look up the old job description that you had and the layout of how it was.
Have Haley help you with it?
How it always structured that stuff.
Citizens? That we don't do job descriptions. We just do a job, so we need to have everything right.
Yeah, Haley can help tremendously with that. That's what she do. That's what she does.
All right, well, anything else?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie.
You gotta think. Think about that.
Get up till Monday.
No, no, no.
Stop it? Michelle, do you get a stop-in?
If y'all decide you wanna do the.
For all the work you do?
Oh, 15th, I'm sorry. And we're doing 10:30, cause Tammy's got the doctor's appointment.
Michelle, I guess we're doing about the stop-in.
Right. Right.
Does Nikki get a stop-in?
I don't believe you do, do you Nikki? You don't get a stop-in or travel experience or anything, do you? Well, anything else at all today? If not, we'll meet again at, uh, 9:30 in the morning and we start out with maintenance.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have motion by Tammy to adjourn. I have seconds. I have three seconds.
Three.
I'll accept one of those seconds. All right, all in favor? All in favor to adjourn, that's five, four, zero, again. Sorry, Hilda, who'd you say you're looking for? No, he was, him and Martin were in their office doing a lot of research here about an hour or so ago. So, uh, Michelle, looks like we closed down about what, 2:35, 2:36 PM? That was a pass. And that's the human operation. That's, that's had a.